Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a school committee meeting, August 4th, 2020. Welcome. It's an unusual meeting, everyone, on Tuesday. But as those of you who have been following, we and we're working with the Labor Management Council, we're working with the principals, many of them are on the call today. So thank you to all of those who have joined us. I really appreciate it. And know that tonight, we're going to hear the latest plan. And each week, our plan gets more detailed and moves in a direction that will get us closer to what we want in the fall. And so it's building on our past presentations. But tonight, we're going to start with the presentation from our interim superintendent, Dr. Marini. And then we will move on to questions from the school committee members. And we will then hear comment and questions from the public. Again, we'll do that again on Thursday at noon. And then Thursday, we hope to come to some consensus with the school committee as we make our recommendations. And those are sent to the state, to DSE, Department of Education, Secondary Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, due August 10. So with that in mind, Dr. Marini, I will turn it over to you.
Oh, great introduction, Suzanne. I think you captured it beautifully. But before we begin, I do want to acknowledge that I did not send out an update last week. You know, I probably have, as they say, a lot of excuses, but no real reason. I should have sent that out because that creates, people were expecting some information and I was, I didn't feel prepared to send out information that was going to be worthwhile. So I didn't send it out and I apologize for that. I should have, I should have sent it out. So let me, let me just clear the air with that and tell you that on the website, you'll be able to access tonight's presentation. Is it on right now, Erin, or is it going up?
On there right now. If you go to the main page and click on reopening plans, you should see the link to the presentation right on top.
Okay, thank you. And as Suzanne has said, we will review and look at all the questions. And if we don't get to all of the questions between now and tomorrow, we will take the questions and we will post them as questions and answers, questions and answers. And so we'll do that. The process tonight, as Suzanne has indicated, is we are going to dig deeper into the presentation, into the plans for the opening, because the more we, more information we have, the more becomes known to us, the better the presentation is. We had to look at three models, as I think you're aware, an all-in, 100% return, a hybrid, some in, some out, and 100% remote. And, and as we presented last time, we did, we did stress tests on the buildings for the all-in. And with the all-in, we were looking at three feet between desks, edge to edge, and six feet. And looking at the, the three feet edge to edge, Matt Gillis set up a couple of classrooms. We went on a tour. We looked at the classrooms. We sat with the, with the tables. There were four-person tables. There was plexiglass that was set up as quadrants. And we sat at these tables and the three-foot distance was not satisfactory, in my view. It was too close, three feet between students. Unless everybody is somehow stationary, certainly very quickly becomes one, one foot, one and a half. And it was, it was, it felt uncomfortable and crowded, and I will not recommend that. The other thing is the all-remote. The all-remote, pretty much is, everybody knows what learning all-remote means in terms of the instruction. What's not clear, what hasn't been explicitly developed is what does that instruction look like when it's all remote? In terms of the quality of the program, the expectations for teachers, the accountability, the homework, the assessment, the parent contact, the student contact, the, the grading system that goes with that, and, and all of what makes up school in, in a remote environment, we haven't been completely explicit about, and we still have to do more work on that, quite frankly. And I think the teachers themselves would say they need to do more work on that as well. And, and they would be very interested in doing that. The other model is a hybrid. And what's important, as opposed to the remote, is getting students in school. It's, 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 we believe it's really important for students to be able to come in, to see their teachers, to be with their teachers, to the extent possible. There's nothing that compares with students and teachers together, learning in real time, face-to-face. So we looked at a hybrid model, and you're going to hear a lot more about as we go through, that will bring, breaking essentially into two groups, an A group and a B group, so that we can keep kids a six-foot distance and provide in-person teaching. And we would do that on sort of alternating days where they would spend some time at home and, and remote, and sometime in school with their, with their teachers and learning that. And that brings students in. So that piece, we spent time, and I really want to appreciate the principals. I want to give a great shout out to the principals. Principals met as a group, and they worked very hard to see how can we make this work in our building. And they, they worked across schools and developed schedules, plans, and, and, and programs that they would be able to offer and how they would, how they would do that. And they did it for two days and have developed a plan that actually we can implement. Now, it's also important for me to say that this decision, now, this, this is, I, I would, I would strongly encourage this, even though I haven't even talked with my team about this. But this is a decision that is not cast in stone forever. As conditions on the ground change, so too should we, what we, what we will be doing in schools. So the worst-case scenario is we get a big spike on, on the virus and everybody goes remote. Well, clearly, we're going to have to change and go remote. Conversely, if we're in school and conditions really improve and it, it feels as though we are moving in a really positive direction, we can begin to include more students in, in the school. The goal is to get students back to, in, in class and back to school. That's the goal, and to do it as safely as we can. In order to, and so once this decision is made, school committee is, this commission is requiring school committees to vote on an implementation plan. Once, once that has been decided, the, another obligation is to work with the teachers' union to develop a new MOU, Memorial of Understanding. And I've been attending the Joint Labor Council meetings with the, with the union. They are ready to begin that process now. We need to have a, a decision on what we're implementing because that would, that impacts the changes in the working conditions that need to be negotiated. So that comes before the MOU, but we are, we are ready. The school, I say we, the school committee is ready to negotiate and the teachers' union is ready to negotiate. And, you know, this, everybody knows this has been a difficult process. No kidding. This has been a horrific process. And, and, and I, and someone said to me today, and I actually think it makes a lot of sense, I'm tired of hearing that there's a lot of anxiety. No kidding. There is a lot of anxiety. Let's roll up our sleeves and let's see if we can't get this done. Everybody's not going to be pleased with the result. That, that's a given. But I do think we all have the same goal, and that's to really, and, and it's multi-layered. We want to do the best we can for the students. Clearly, that goes without saying. We want to be safe. Clearly, that goes without saying. And we want to be able to do this to preserve our sense of community and to, and, and to, to work together in a way that we really bring out the best in all of us. That can only happen if we can listen to each other and try to, to try to make the decision that really, really aligns with that value. And people are going to have different, different points of view about that. And I, and I really do, I really appreciate that. I, I read every email that comes to me, even though I have to say I get too many emails. But I, I do read the emails and I try to put myself in the shoes of the person who's writing the email. And it, it, it can be, it can be an emotional experience and it really is, it's really difficult. So know that we're taking this very seriously. Know that this cake is not baked because things change and we've been working with those, at those expert panels. I mean, it's a godsend in, in order to be able to have people that, that you can call and you can actually have some candid conversations with. So this is, this is, it's a difficult process because you have to make a decision that nobody really wants to make. But we have to make a decision. We have to move forward. We have to do what we think is, is best for, for the, for the students, for the community. We have families that have a lot of stresses on them as well. We cannot solve all the problems. We just can't. So we have to stick to our values, stick to what we believe, do what we think is in the best interest of the students, and do that with all the integrity that we have. And, and we will negotiate an MOU. We will, we will have the schools returned, I hope, we will have schools return students to the extent possible, and we will have the buildings in as good a shape as we can have. So if I would ask your forbearance, it would be just on knowing that we, we, that things are changing and we keep getting more and more detailed. And by Thursday, we're going to have what's called a blueprint, and the blueprint is exceedingly detailed, more so than what you will see this evening. And that, it's, we're, we're putting that together with the unbelievable help of the principals on some of that detail. And, and then we are going to roll up our sleeves and we're not going to shrink from this responsibility. It is a daunting responsibility for us. It's very difficult when you, when you, you're dealing with an issue that you know half the people that you're talking with about it are taking a position and, and, and a point of view contrary to the one that you have, and yet you have to move forward on that. We will move forward on that. We will move forward to, on the plan that we need to implement, and we will do the best we can by the students, period. But it won't be without stress. So if I missed anything, somebody cue me. Otherwise, I think, Case, I'm going to flip it over to you. You can come back to me periodically if, if you, if you need me to help.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that everybody can see the slides. Great. Erin, I can see you on my screen. Can you see, give me a thumbs up if you can see the slides. Great, thank you. So here's a quick link for folks who are following at home and want to take a look at the slides at their own speed. Here's the link where you can find the presentation tonight. So for tonight's meeting, we'll cover a small number of topics, but we'll actually go deep into each of these, as Dr. Marini had mentioned. We're looking at this as an opportunity to inform and educate the entire school committee, caregivers and staff, on where we are with reopening planning. Most importantly to note is what Dr. Marini said, which is what we're proposing to the committee tonight as we go over all of the work that's been completed, compiled and synthesized since we last presented to school committee on the 27th of July. First is health and safety. These items are for any staff or student who return to buildings. We will ask that students and staff, students with the help of caregivers, to self-assess for symptoms of COVID and ask that you stay home, anybody to stay home, if they're not feeling well. There will be built-in reminders to practice good hand hygiene, washing of hands, and using sanitizer if washing isn't immediately available. While the State Department of Education, DSE, has allowed for three feet of physical distance within schools, we have determined that six feet is what we will follow in Brookline. Students will be co-horted and will travel into these cohorts throughout the day. This has been specified by DSE and we agree with the goal, numbers of adults and children throughout the day while they are in buildings. And last, but absolutely most important of all, is ensuring that our buildings are well-ventilated and that we're working with facilities to maximize ventilation, which we'll talk a lot more in detail about. I will now pass it off to Matt Gillis. Are you there, Matt? I don't hear him. So what we will do actually is skip through the next three slides. And when Matt comes on, we will offer a facilities update with regard to ventilation. Unless, I know that we have Dave Gashack on the call. Dave, is this something that you can speak to in terms of where we are with window inventory?
Probably better to, to let Matt take the lead on that. Happy to, to chime in as helpful.
Okay, great. Thank you. I can speak about tents. There has been a lot of information out there regarding tents. We are looking into procuring tents. They do look more like canopies because we won't get the ventilation, ventilation that we need if they are tense with walls. The tents would be used for outdoor breaks and classes for which lessons are purposefully planned and that they lend themselves to being outdoors. We are, and I speak for the principals on this too, are of the position that simply just sending teachers and students outside to conduct class won't serve anyone academically, but we get, what can serve us all is when we think about outdoor learning and pedagogically in terms of how we approach being outside. So if we're going to take students outside more frequently, it has to be purposely designed. And we do have a moment here that will allow us to be more outside than inside. But the important piece here is to ensure that it's done in a purposeful way.
Casey, can I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
Matt, he'll be logging in in a second. He was looking for his invite and was struggling with that. So he's, he's on his way.
Okay, when he jumps on, we will head back to the facilities pieces. I will kick it off to Erin for the next few slides.
Thanks, Casey. So this is a slide that you've seen before. We just want to, again, give everybody who's watching or listening some background on the guidance that we received from the Department of Education. And here's the continuing, the continuum, excuse me, of fall reopening models as DSE sees it and as we are essentially required to, you know, detail out to them by the 10. So on the far left there, you have returning to school without restrictions. Obviously, that's not something that, you know, anyone is comfortable with at this time. Moving to the right, you have the in-person learning with new safety requirements, students returning to school in person, the classrooms, schedules, and making sure there are protocols to meet health and safety requirements, which have been outlined. The middle model there is our hybrid learning model, which we will talk a lot about this evening, where students are learning both in-person and remotely. And then finally, on the far right, there is the remote learning model, which we are all familiar with. Students learning online and staff teaching and instructing all online. And so is this really small for all of you?
Yeah, it is. Sorry about that. I don't know why that is, but I have this.
It's okay. So again, last week, we got some updated guidance from the state around the number of days for students for the school year. So instead of students being required to attend school for 180 days, the state has given us a 10-day preparation for reopening allowance, so that school for students would be 170 days. Similarly, they've given us some leeway on structured learning time and the amount of hours required for students. So you'll see there that students need to now receive a minimum of 850 hours of instruction at the elementary level and 935 hours at the secondary level. And again, this structured learning time really means time in which students are engaged in regularly scheduled instruction, learning activities, learning assignments. The state was very clear about what needs to happen during structured learning, and we have all of that documentation. We've used that in our planning. And then this key date slide. So we did submit our preliminary reopening plan to DSE last Friday on the 31st. That plan was essentially very similar to what we presented to school committee on the 27th. As we've noted, August 10th is when our final plans are due. We will also make sure those are published to the public at that time as well. So I believe that's next Monday. September 1st is when all staff would report to school. And then September 6th is our tentative first day of school for students. Given that 10-day window of preparation, we will have to move back the start date from the original calendar. And just to note, this is all subject to discussion with our union.
Just in case those who are listening and not looking at the screen, I believe, Erin, you said September 6th, but the tentative start date for students is September 16th.
I'm sorry, 16th. Looking right at it.
No problem. I'll move into the learning model recommendations that Dr. Marini referenced at the beginning of tonight. But I do want to stress again that in developing these recommendations, our top priorities were the health and safety of all of our students, faculty, staff, and by extension, all of their families. We are still very much committed to making certain that our kids are growing in their learning as much as we can in this school year. Similarly, we are committed to choosing a model that allows us to deliver the same high-quality instruct, high-quality instruction that we would have if we were to be fully in without any restrictions. What you'll see in the coming slides, as the chair of the school committee mentioned, is additional work and thinking that has gone into consideration for these three different models of reopening. You'll see that we have built on what we presented on the 27th. So what we have here is an overview. We've made the determination with the superintendent that the district will require six feet of distance, while of course, DSE recommends three. We're not comfortable with that. After consultations with our expert panels, Dr. Swannie-Jett, the director of the Public Health Department in town, and site visits to classrooms set up at six feet and three feet apart, we have made the determination to keep with the six feet. We've also made a determination that we will prioritize bringing back in our youngest learners and our students with highest needs. In order to do this at six feet apart, we will have to split classes into two. So taking classes of 18 to 22 students and breaking up into classes of nine to 10 or 12. It does require using other classrooms in our school buildings. And for this reason, we couldn't bring back the other grades because I know we had some questions about, well, if you can bring back K to 2, how is it that we can't bring back 3 to 12? And a lot of this rests on the six-foot distance. We do want to get kids back in school as soon as we can, for as long as we can, before things begin to shift, especially when cold and flu season begins to hit. We are in frequent communication with Dr. Jett and are identifying metrics to monitor, which we would do at specified time intervals. We are also finishing up our protocols to follow for when a student and staff member shows symptom of the, symptoms of the virus or tests positive. Here we have the details of what we are recommending, which is a hybrid model. The decision was based on many professionals. We have school leaders, school in town, facilities departments, expert panel members, as well as the town's Public Health Department, in particular, Dr. Jett. The decision to recommend a hybrid model was not easily made, as the chair and the superintendent mentioned. They were, however, informed by those who are monitoring state and local infection rates, those who are reviewing current research on the virus and its trajectory, as well as any mitigating factors that we can leverage as a district to bring kids back and educators back. I do want to thank you again for expert panel number four in particular, for their direction and guidance and helping with this planning. As I mentioned earlier, we do want to get students back in school as soon as we can. And for as long as we can. Again, here you'll see that we have made a commitment to bring back our youngest learners and those with our high needs in this in-person model here. And what you'll see here is the hybrid version for grades three through 12. The principals initially had spent two full days working through different versions of the schedule, trying to bring back as many students as we can for as much FaceTime with adults as we can. This was what we were most comfortable with in terms of providing safety to everybody involved, adults included. So the hybrid version, which we will go much deeper into, presents a two to three days in person and two to three days in remote, depending on the cohort that you're in and the week that we're in. And again, this is for the third to eighth grade and the high school. We do, there's an asterisk here because the high school does, you'll see when Hal Mason presents, does end later than the K to eights. There is also going to be a full-remote option for any student or family who needs to opt out for whatever reason. There is an asterisk here because we are still figuring out what the full-remote options will be for families. But what we are aiming for is a more structured experience than what we saw in the spring. Sorry about that. So in terms of the curriculum, I want to add that we have no intentions of replaying or replicating what happened in the spring. We recognize that curriculum needs to be more robust in whatever way that it is delivered. There were some great questions from the committee at the last meeting about curriculum. So we're hoping to dive a little bit deeper into it. The Office of Teaching and Learning, as well as my office, the Office of Student Services, have started working with curriculum coordinators to respond to the current landscape and ensure that the curriculum does focus on the social, emotional needs of our students. We're also focused on building time to build out the executive functioning skills for all students. Curriculum developers are also ensuring that the standards that are focused on this year leverage multiple content areas with 10 fewer days in the school year. We really need to make sure that whatever we put in front of our students is even more robust. The standards that to be taught this year will also have to be essential ones that we know are going to be generalizable and transferable beyond this year. Again, we want to make sure that the students are going to be able to connect this year's work to next year's and beyond.
So a book of sorry, Casey, do, do you mind if maybe I share my slides or there, I don't know what, maybe you downloaded it on a format that's not doing the text. a format that's not doing the text correctly?
Sure.
Um, no problem. I just want to make sure people can see.
Yep. I will stop sharing.
All right, can you see my slides?
Yep.
Great.
Uh, great. Next slide, please. Oh, this is perfect. Thank you. So um, a bulk of our time will be spent talking about the hybrid model as Dr. Marini mentioned earlier. We want to give the community as many details as we can. We recognize that the, again, I mentioned earlier, the challenges that both families and educators faced in the spring. Um, I want to say again that we have no interest, or do we plan to, nor do we plan to repeat the experience uh, from the spring. Um, next slide, please. So in this hybrid model, during in-person instruction, the focus will be on relationship building, developing the connections that are built at the beginning um, of every other school year, were we not in a pandemic? Um, we are expecting that teachers will also use this time to introduce big ideas and concepts. We know that uh, doing this in person really is the best way to reach all students. In-person time will also be used to assess where students are with learning uh, so that it does inform teachers of what additional support um, students may need either in person or remotely. Uh, and lastly, it gives teachers the time to continue to hold uh, small groups. Next slide, please. In terms of remote learning, um, when a student is uh, uh, learning remotely, there will be opportunities for the students to apply the big ideas and concepts that were taught when they were in person. Um, students may continue to receive small group instruction. Um, they may receive IEP services um, and or English language services to be delivered remotely. And then also during remote learning time, students will receive um, music, art, world language, and uh, wellness lessons uh, offered synchronously and um, asynchronously. What we will do next is um, dive deep into the sample daily schedules uh, for folks to see exactly uh, what a day in the life of would look like uh, in this hybrid model. Next line. I'll kick it off to Michelle Herman, who is our Director of Professional Development and has spent um, four full days working with principals. Um, and this is in-person time, which does not include all the time that we have been working together offline um, to get schedules as close to perfect as we can uh, in terms of prioritizing the needs that we stated earlier before. Um, so Michelle, I'll kick it off to you.
Great, thank you, and good evening. Um, we're going to take a look at some sample schedules. Please note that the exact time allocations for the classes are an estimate based on principals working with the number of teachers that they have assigned to their buildings and kind of determining how much time we can put into different courses and use our faculty to the um, most efficient and best way for students. Uh, we are going to need some flexibility on some instructional time, and you'll see that represented in the slides. We're going to look specifically, or I'm going to share with you specifically, the three to eight hybrid. And what you'll see on Wednesdays, which we'll explain a little bit, is when students are on remote learning, they'll be working on some project-based material. And then I'll kick it over to Hal Mason, who will talk specifically to the high school hybrid model and how their Wednesdays look. So can we have the next slide, please? So this is specific to, I'm going to just get my face off the screen. Okay, this is specific to kindergarten. And what you'll notice is, as um, Casey noted, kindergarten will be in five days a week. And therefore, they will receive their specials during the school day. So, and each day they'll have a special. But you'll see that there are large chunks of instructional time for each of the four co- core content areas. And that is also built that way so that we can have time in, within those periods for any intervention or small group work. At the end of the day, you'll notice that it is a one o'clock dismissal so that the staff has time to prepare for the next day. We have the next slide. So as we look at grade three, the, these, this is group A coming to grade three. And what you'll notice is group A is in person, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. They will receive a full hour of instruction in each of the core content areas. And they will have a long snack and recess, and that is so that um, they have time to have a real snack and and some exercise prior to the dismissal at one o'clock. On Thursday and Friday, they will have um, their specials, and you can see that those are worked out, and their world language block. And this is for students who would come in person, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. There'll also be an intervention block provided to students uh, via remote on those two days. If you go to the next slide, what you'll see is the alternate week for that same group of students. So they would be in person, Monday and Tuesday, and they would receive a block of time for each of the core content areas, and again, a long recess. And what you'll see on Wednesday is more of a project-based intervention, an intervention day. When Casey shared before that the in-person would be setting students up with their content and introducing the big ideas and the skills, Wednesdays give them the opportunity to address those skills in um, other content areas, multidisciplinary areas, and OTL will be supporting the work to create some project-based materials for teachers to use. And then again, Thursday and Friday in the remote world, they will receive their specialists, world language, and an intervention block. And if, just in case, um, we're considering timing, world language would have been taught uh, three times twenty minutes, and this way they're getting two times thirty minutes. Can we go on to the next slide? So here, what we're seeing is the fourth grade, and you would see that their model A week, this is group A for fourth and fifth, is the same as the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for the third grade, and then Thursday, Friday, they would have remote specials. What will happen here is again, it, the flip week, the flip week will look much like the third grade. So going into sixth grade, here's where we start to have a little bit of a shift because we add in conservatory. And so what we've done there is put on the ver- the remote days, two large blocks of project-based learning in addition to their um, specials and world language. They may also have an intervention block in there. Interventions also may be um, received during the in-time, in-school time. And then if we go to seven, eight, so in grade seven and eight, the big difference here is you'll see that there is world language provided five days a week. So students will continue as they do now to have five full um, in, two, it, sorry, three in-person world language and two out. And then the following week, they would have two in-person world language and three out. But yet, you'll also see that conservatory has been added and that students will also have a project-based learning time. So we have some questions coming in. Um, Casey, I don't know, do we want these to come in now, or should we address them after we talk to the high school?
I think that the um, chair, I don't, last time at least, uh, preferred that questions were held until the end. Um.
Great, we'll take them after. So I just want to leave that for now, and we'll come back to more scheduling. As I said, these are approximations on time, but giving us the ability to focus on core content areas in person provides students with ongoing work in those project-based or interdisciplinary units when they are outside of school so that the learning does not stop in the core content areas, but also gives the opportunity for them to have their specials remotely. So I'm going to pass this to Hal and let him move on to the high school project.
Hi, everyone. I, I hope you see those big letters that say draft at the top because I want to be sure the people are clear, this is a draft. Uh, and, and you should also notice that this is version seven A. You know, last year, for the first time in a dozen years, we changed the schedule at the high school, and we went through six different versions of the schedule. Here, we're already on version seven, and it just gives you an indication of how much things are changing and how many things we're trying to pull in to consider. So this is our draft version of what will be a hybrid schedule. One group will come in on the pinkish-colored times, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday morning, and another group comes in on the blue-colored times, Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, and we're not looking at this as uh, we, so if you look at Monday, for example, you'll see that there's an A block. It matches up very nicely with the way we've all, we've been doing blocks for, for years. There are seven different blocks. But within that A block, that fifty-minute A-one block is then followed immediately by A-two, and that's shaded. And this again is more of a support block. So it's just sort of breaking up how we look at that time. You know, we had a number of different versions, earlier versions of this, and in one of them on the Monday, for example, we ran through six blocks of the day, which somewhat mirrors what we do in the high school now, although we don't like six-block days, we prefer four or five-block days. But we were trying to get all the blocks in during the week for a hybrid schedule. And what we realized is that for a hybrid schedule, you also have to be thinking about the kids who are at home and are remote at that time. And this is something es- especially, especially for the high school because we expect that those kids are also going to be in some way engaged with the lesson that the teacher is doing during the A-one block. To try to stack six blocks, six different preparations and six different blocks on that Monday, we quickly realized was not going to work in that remote world. It's all based on the experience that we had in the, in the spring. And so we paired up the blocks and created just three instructional blocks for each day, followed by the student support block, where the teacher is putting kids into groups, following up with kids, talking to the kids who are looking in online uh, in the remote environment. And we think that this provides a way for us to get to something close to the full curriculum of the high school. There's no way we're going to do a hundred percent of the curriculum, that, that nobody would, n- nobody could expect that. Uh, but we think that using a method like this, we can get to, and we can get through a large part of the curriculum in each one of the subjects. I mean, that's what I'm thinking is here in version seven A. Eight A, nine A, and ten A may uh, reflect different uh, priorities and different things that we hear back uh, in, in reflection after talking to you and, and all the other groups that we've been talking to. Andy, anything to add to that?
I just want to, thanks, Hal, and thanks for all your work on these seven versions, and thanks to curriculum coordinators and other school leaders beginning to provide um, feedback on the schedules. Um, I'd just point also to the need for an advisory program and for that to land uh, in the schedule is T-one uh, and T-two, right, Hal, in order to um, support community um, within our schedule. We know how critically important that is uh, and something that honestly was lacking uh, within the high school experience during the pandemic. Uh, and then also, we want to include um, what we're labeling as either X-block, which has been um, around Brookline High School for the sixteen years that I've been uh, there, allowing for, and, and previous to that, allowing for um, clubs to meet or um, students to access teachers. Um, and then we're also labeling that as SEL time, making sure just as our pre-K to eight um, partners are doing, that we're engaging in social emotional learning and including space, both um, time during classes uh, and space within our schedule. Um, and then I'd also just speak to what we talked about at the last school committee, and that is the critical importance of collaboration time uh, and supporting teachers to um, work on uh, t- you know, on their teams, um, subject area and course-specific teams, and engage in professional learning and professional development. So that's um, in this schedule as well.
So to answer Andy's question, it depends on the uh, elective class. Uh, the, the question, for those of you that can't see the chat, is uh, which core subjects have we taught in person and, and most electives remotely? Uh, and so no, uh, most electives will be taught in person. Some uh, such as chorus, such as band, and some of the, the dance classes, for example, uh, will be taught remotely based on the Desi guidance that we have received uh, so far. Uh, and Susan is asking a question. Uh, and, and yes, you're absolutely right, Susan. It's very early for us to be talking about that. This is the type of thing that's going to be so useful for us to have those extra days at the beginning of September because it's going to be a huge change for staff to go from thinking about what has traditionally been a sixty or seventy-minute block at, at the longest to a- almost two hours. And so that's a big change, and how you're going to structure your lessons, and how you're going to do the pacing for that is something that uh, is, is certainly a change. And, and, and we know that it's going to be difficult. But again, for, for other reasons, we think that this is a, a better way to set up, again, when balancing the hybrid world with all, would, remember, hybrid is, means half the kids are remote. And this schedule also, of course, works if we do have a time when we're going to a full remote schedule.
I also just want to leave some time too for any of the pre-K to eight um, principals, if they want, you know, to give any share any thoughts about uh, the creation of the schedules that Michelle presented. I can flip slides if necessary.
I think there'll be time too at the end, once questions start coming in, Erin. Okay, great.
Just, this, it's Asa. I'm happy to jump in just with a couple of little things to be sure that we're always kind of putting in as um, in our parking lot that, you know, these kinds of things are really dependent on a robust MOU that allows us to have really robust conversations again with our staff, where people feel really great as practitioners and felt, you know, their work is honored and we're really, you know, firing all together. I think also, understanding that we have, we'll have kind of some significant staffing needs we'll need to address. Um, and we're really going to have, to have a lot of difficult conversations around spacing priorities and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, and I think that at each K-eight, these schedules are going to look and feel different depending on kind of the resources at hand in each school. And at the same time, the K through eight principals are really committed to having a shared experience so that a kid at Driscoll is going to have the same as close to possible, the same equitable experience as a kid at Heath and so on, all while we're really taking care of our, our students with the highest needs and providing, of course, FAP and, and the least restrictive environment. And so I think it, I just want to make sure that we're always keeping those mental pins in our head while we're moving through all of these possibilities.
Thank you, Asa. Any other principals want to hop in at the moment? You'll always get your chance. Great.
Okay, I'm going to touch a little bit um, here in the next couple of slides on the remote learning model. Um, so students and staff in this model regularly participate in complete online instruction. And as Dr. Marini mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and we are considering a few options, one of which um, is coordinated by the Public Schools of Brookline um, fully remote, and the other is a state-approved remote learning platform that we will get some more information on um, later this week. Uh, they had to put out an RFP for um, that platform, and so they're just getting to the point where they're finalizing who they they have selected for that process. Um, and our Office of Teaching and Learning will um, learn a little bit more about that um, in the upcoming days. As Dr. Marini mentioned, we are still, you know, in process of planning what this could look like. If this was coordinated by the Public Schools of Brookline, you know, obviously, even if we use the state-approved learning platform, we will have to coordinate it um, internally a little bit as well. And so we just want to make it clear that, you know, this is an option for families and for students, um, but not completely fleshed out moment. Um, here are the decisions we have been able to make. So as of today, um, we don't recommend that we start the school year fully remote for all students. So students may opt into this full remote learning model. Um, any student who cannot come back to school in person due to health and safety reasons or any um, parent guardian who selects this model for their child must commit for an entire semester. Um, we feel it's really important for, you know, planning purposes, for enrollment, for spacing, for teachers, for community, um, to be able to have that commitment and not kind of go back and forth between um, models just for the sake of some consistency and again, community. Um, students and staff will be surveyed to fully understand how available they are for in-person instructions. Um, students and staff will be surveyed to fully understand how available they are for in-person instructions. So we will have another survey um, that goes out to both of these um, constituents after our August, yeah, August tenth um, submission and publication. We want people to have some time to kind of fully understand what we've submitted and what we're proposing um, before we ask them to make a commitment about their um, in-person learning and instruction. Um, again, the structure for a full remote learning plan will either be coordinated by the district or provided through a state approved platform. And we will work with the Brookline Department of Public Health at different checkpoints um, throughout the fall to determine whether we need to transition fully um, to remote learning at some point during the fall.
Great. Thanks, Erin. Um, so we're gonna move off of learning models uh, and talk a bit about uh, some other issues that um, we have been thinking through. One is um, extended day. It's important that we announce to the school committee that um, in the school commu- community um, that we do have a commitment to provide extended day. Um, are uh, other issues that we need to be considered is uh, at what sites? Uh, how many s- spots are uh, we can actually provide, assuming that um, we will continue with the six feet of distancing? Uh, what does, what do transitions look like to ensure that we can still uh, effectively in between the end of the school day and the start of um, extended day? Next slide, please. A note about special education. Um, we wanted to put here that um, the goal here is to provide all of the services outlined as is in a student's IEP. This is a difference from the spring when the guidance from DESI uh, really recognized that districts were all operating with very different resources uh, and defining new practices. Um, moving forward though, we do have the um, educators uh, prepared to provide teletherapy um, in whatever fashion, uh, or sorry, whatever model um, a student is in. So I'll start with just quickly. Um, students who are going to be in person, we will continue the push-in and pull-out model. Uh, cohorts will be created um, to limit exposure. So uh, I mentioned this at the last meeting. Um, when uh, Mr. Broman asked me this question about how students are typically co-horted. Um, they're distributed evenly typically uh, across classes uh, in each grade level. But in order to limit exposure to um, more people, we will have to cohort students differently. Related services and intervention blocks will be scheduled for students who are uh, in person, for students who are participating in the hybrid model. Again, um, we will cohort them play uh, thoughtfully to continue to provide push-in and pull-out services outlined in a student's IEP. Uh, same with teletherapy, uh, where speech and language pathologists um, all now have the equipment that they need to do so. Um, we are providing some of this in E S Y already. Um, and uh, P D uh, has occurred and uh, is continuing uh, for therapists, uh, and similar to in-person related services. Uh, and any interventions will be scheduled based on need. For those who are going to operate in the remote model, uh, we will be providing in-home services um, and services can be delivered through um, structured lessons um, or through video conferencing. In terms of support for English learners, um, again, we are going to provide uh, as we're going to mirror the in, fully in um, model of support and services as we can through these different models for our English learners. So for example, for students who are in person, um, we will be developing cohorts through the grade levels and based on proficiency levels. Um, intervention blocks are also going to be scheduled um, either in the afternoon or in the place of um, core ELA classes depending on the student's proficiency level. For students who are in a hybrid mode, uh, there will be consistent in-person teaching. Some ESL classes will be scheduled during a core ELA uh, block. Um, and then the high school will have a block schedule that will include an academic support block for any ESL tutorials uh, and related services, both uh, in person and on remote days. For those who are opting in the remote model, services can be delivered through screencast, uh, digital whiteboards, cameras, um, and discussion boards. For our students who are coming from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, we're also planning for a continuation of supports in the three models. Uh, food services will continue providing the uh, same service that uh, we've been doing so this summer of breakfasts and lunches, uh, all pre-ordered. Uh, right now for the summer, all meals are free regardless of income. Uh, unfortunately, we do not yet have word on whether or not the state is going to continue this program into the school year. Uh, and by that I don't mean the um, free and reduced lunch program, but rather the um, state allowing districts to serve all meals free regardless of income. Um, and we do have Mary Ellen on the call tonight too, who can field um, any food service questions. Um, either way, for students qualified for free and reduced lunch, we'll continue the summer offerings with uh, grab and go. And then during the day for um, at the end of the day, uh, once we uh, the school year uh, is kicked off. Um, we will also work off of the list of students from the spring for those who need devices and ensure that um, students have access. Our steps to success um, program staff will also continue to check in with students on a weekly basis and provide uh, support um, uh, ongoing and as needed. Next slide, please. So predictably, there are potential financial implications uh, among some of the uh, expenses mentioned by some folks already tonight are uh, the need to hire more staff to support K two students as we're splitting into more classrooms. Um, we also may need additional staff to monitor halls and buses with stricter protocols while students are in buildings. We did talk um, uh, very briefly about um, desks and other building related changes that may need to happen. Um, we will also need to pay educators uh, to be trained um, and developed depending on the MOA that we construct um, with the union. Uh, before I go to the next steps, I believe that Matt Gillis is on the call. Uh, Matt, can you just shout out if you are there?
I'm here now.
Okay, I appreciate it. Erin, if you can go back to the three slides from the beginning, that would be great. And Matt, you probably saw that we also have Dave Gashak, um, who graciously made time for us in his schedule tonight to speak to the work of um, panel four.
Okay, so thi- this slide that you're looking at is an update of our ventilation and indoor air quality. And um, what we're trying to uh, reach is a recommended goal is five air changes per hour uh, or potentially uh, four air changes per hour with a MERV thirteen um, uh, filter uh, that's in the system. And and I think uh, just in case folks are new to this uh, and haven't heard this this term before, MERV thirteen rated filter or higher is one that could catch the virus in in the filter. Um, one through twelve, not not nearly as likely or consistently able to catch it. And the ratings go up to MERV seventeen or also known as HEPA filters. Um, the Ridley School has four air uh, changes uh, per hour in the system and MERV uh, fourteen rated filters. And so uh, with the combination of those things, I was just, uh, I'm trying to pin down that that would be an acceptable level of of air quality in in the building uh, for the staff and then for the students, the staff and the rest of the community that would be inside. And then the rest of the buildings, we're looking at at how we get there as uh, most of them have an air change rate of about two per hour um, per building, uh, per building code and and functioning properly. And then whether or not we can get anything else for window use or portable air purifiers. Uh, a lot of those seem to be able to change uh, uh, the air and the air rate in the room and filter it at a rate of two to three, sometimes three plus per uh, per hour, depending on the size of the room and the the speed at which the filter can work uh, so that we can try to meet uh, recommendations of the expert advisory panel. Um, just uh, I've been 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 working on this and and so has uh, Joe Allen, who who um, finished putting together a tool um, along with uh, I believe another professor or someone from the University of Colorado. Uh, that helps uh, evaluate um, the air purifiers for the space uh, that's that's needed. Um, you know, we were both working on this over the weekend and sort of um, passing by one another um, via email on it. So we're, we're looking at how we get there. Um, and Charlie Simmons and I met with the uh, engineer uh, on the Runkel project and the Ridley project. And he's done some work at Lawrence and some of the other schools. Um, and we're looking at potentially being able to upgrade Runkel uh, Tappan and Lawrence uh, to MERV thirteen. Um, it's, it's gonna be a little bit of trial and error, but it seems like the systems uh, may be able to handle it. At least in theory, uh, without breaking down, we just got a um, the town uh, facilities department is gonna try and put that into practice this week and 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 get us answers. If folks want to go to the next, next slide. So we have a window uh, inventory. Uh, we're, we're almost done. We have the data, just a matter of of finish recording it. But most of the buildings, as you can see, uh, percent operable for classrooms. We're pretty close to a hundred percent. Uh, Baker, Old Lincoln School, Lawrence. In in particular, those, those three buildings and some of the windows at Pierce and the high school. Uh, you know, we've, we've sent lists off to and floor plans off to Charlie Simmons, uh, thanks to the work uh, of uh, you know, many volunteers in the community that have came in and opened and closed windows and and recorded those on floor plans um, to get the, to get those fixed so that we can take advantage of some more outside uh, fresh air as well as make sure our buildings are well maintained. Um, uh, Beacon, which is a rental, one of the rooms is is interior and doesn't have operable windows. So um, that's, that's why that number looks low, but it's, it's not designed that way. And they're gonna be upgraded to MERV thirteen uh, filters, or actually they were last week. So you know, that may not uh, be as necessary, but I uh, there will be some more follow-up with the expert advisory panel uh, when we finish this information. We've got requests out um, for uh, pricing on air purifiers from a few different vendors. Um, and we're also, if you wanna go to the next slide, we're also looking into tents for some outdoor space and um, uh, pricing on furniture. Uh, because some of, some of our uh, four-person tables are really hard to to work around. And the folks that saw the plexiglass weren't too enamored with with that on the tables. It just seemed like even though um, it could separate the kids, i- it didn't, didn't feel right and kids could reach under it and still touch each other, poke each other. Um, not that any of the Brookline students would do that, but in theory, uh, you know, that that could happen. So folks, um, we're, we're interested in how we can maintain the six-foot social distance, um, which is recommended by most, most of the folks that that um, seem to weigh in on this matter, whether it was the superintendent. A lot of folks, uh, if not all of them on the expert advisory panel and one of the options from the state as well as the CDC. So there was that. And then, you know, what's, what's gonna be in the classrooms and most of these, um, if not all, actually all of the things on on here right now are in. Um, they just have to get distributed to to the classrooms. All these things will be here when the teachers return. Um, gallon bottle of hand sanitizer, hand, hand pump bottles uh, for the hand sanitizer. Individually wrapped alcohol wipes, uh, labeled spray bottle for Suprox. It's a peroxide-based neutral cleaner. If the teachers wanted to uh, clean with that, uh, uh, a labeled spray bottle of RT plus, which is a disinfectant that we use. It's that um, has been proven to to kill the virus. Um, paper towels, uh, box of nitro gloves, safety glasses or goggles or face shields in some cases, and a box of masks, um, you know, backup mask for the students and staff. So that when, when staff do return, that the supplies are there and ready for them. And 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 a lot of this is uh, you know, been purchased for the first, the third of the year, uh, so that we can be ready. When, when things uh, when things come in and come up. So we're, we're a little bit relieved that we have uh, these materials on hand. And we'll make adjustments in September to order for the remainder of the year after we've been in school about a month and see how how folks are, are getting used to it. I, I guess, uh, is there one more slide for me or do folks?
Nope.
Okay.
Great. I'll just wait for um, the next step slide. Um, and then we will. Great. So in terms of next steps, uh, these, of course, are not the only things that we will be doing next. Um, but we do have to finalize um, the uh, ventilation uh, inventory and response as Matt just mentioned. Um, there is uh, uh, a lot of activity right now regarding COVID testing. Um, that will have to be in partnership um, with the town side. Um, we are developing a second survey to staff and families so that we can finalize um, enrollment and know which staff um, are electing to not come back uh, in person. Um, the school schedules that Michelle and Hal shared tonight, uh, again, are not set in stone. Um, this is related to the next bullet under that, which is that uh, in order to uh, uh, present a hybrid model, we will need additional staffing um, because we are breaking into uh, other spaces in school buildings. Um, there is the rental for tents and then the potential of having to purchase furniture. Um, in many, if not all of our school buildings, we have two to four-person tables. Um, they are, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but between four and five feet long. And so students would not be able to socially distance at a six-foot um, distance. And so we would need to order desks and relatedly, uh, we'd have to rent space to store all of this ta- these tables. Uh, we only have so much uh, space in our buildings. Uh, I mentioned earlier that um, any new curricula, training and PD that we um, want teachers to be a part of, uh, depending on the MOA, we will have to pay uh, staff to participate. Uh, additionally, there will be costs for whatever remote learning option we provide, be it uh, um, uh, hourly wages to our educators and helping to uh, uh, fully develop the plan or um, if the state option looks like it is a um, more robust, high-quality one. Um, there will be a per pupil amount that we are uh, charged. We mentioned that we will be working with Dr. Jett in order to set those uh, metrics and um, uh, outline what those intervals are during which we will uh, check in. Um, we've mentioned a bunch here that we will have to negotiate with the teachers' union in order to um, strike a new memorandum of understanding. As of right now, the uh, plan is that the school committee will vote on Thursday. Um, it is a day meeting for those of you uh, who will be tuning in. Um, and then the last, final and very comprehensive submission to DESI with our reopening plan uh, is due August tenth. So with that, um, Suzanne, I will kick it to you in terms of how you'd like to take questions.
Can I just add one note about the the two-person tables?
Sure.
So if we are in a hybrid model with a A B cohort, then if Erin and I would normally sit at the same table, I would be in one day, Erin would be in the other, we wouldn't have to modify that furniture. Uh, or find a replacement for that, so to speak. With the four, four-person tables, we would.
Okay. Thank you very much, Casey, Erin, everybody else participated. It was very helpful. I know you've done so much work with this. Um, and I really appreciate it. Uh, and and I would like to point out from slide fourteen that it's not that we have to do either or, or one of the three, but we probably are going forward with all three uh, scenarios and uh, people will have options and choices to to some level, at some level. So what I thought maybe, so this is how it's going, I think it's gonna roll out now, just for tonight. Um, at eight o'clock, we have said we would have public comment and that we have twenty-plus people signed up. So we will need a full hour for that. Um, what I would like to do now is ask the school committee members to uh, ask the questions, uh, limit the amount of time they talk now, so everybody has a chance. And then after public comment, we can go back to deliberating uh, among the schools. And then after public comment, we can go back to deliberating among the school committee members if we would. And I might also suggest that if you have particular questions for all of our guests, our. Central office people and our principals, that perhaps we ask that now so that they don't have to stay. Beyond the hour that we will stay. So if someone has a question or questions, we'll start and we'll, we'll get to, we're going to get to everybody once before we come back to you. Okay. So I saw Jennifer, Helen, David and Barbara and Jennifer, go right ahead.
Does that mean we're limited to one question or just I have to get them all at once?
No, it means try not to talk too, too long so your colleagues can have a chance, but you can ask more than one question. But we will come back again another round. So you, you don't have to get everything in now.
Okay. So I'm just going to sort of throw out my questions. I know that some of them we may have answers to now and some we may not. But there, there are definitely questions that. You know, I'm interested in hearing the answers to be very important in decision making. The first one, I'm, I'm very concerned about the remote learning piece, specifically whether or not. Who will be running it? This, this, our district or the state? So this is the first time that I'm hearing about a state option and I'm very concerned. And this is probably the only comment that I'll, I'll try to give to, in my minutes here. I'm very concerned because I don't have enough details about the state option, but it's concerning to me in that it wouldn't be our teachers. Sound to me, because I don't know enough about it, that I'm concerned if our teachers are not delivering that instruction to our students, that they wouldn't be in cohorts of students that they're familiar with. So that option is very, very concerning to me. At whatever cost, there are so many detriments to me that just off the cuff, I'm having a. A very skeptical reaction to that, for those reasons specifically. I think that kids should, if we're remote, they're going to at least have connections to. Other peers in their class, whether or not they're close friendships or not. So I'm, I'm just very concerned about that and very anxious to hear more information specifically about that. Because I think that, as Suzanne mentioned, I think we're going to be. You know, if we're going to be running multiple models, I think especially we need to think about this model. Quite a bit because there is a very good possibility, I think, in my opinion, that, that we may need all students to be using this model at some point. Especially as we head into the winter season. I'm, I'm a little concerned. I am concerned about not requiring all students to wear masks. Even our youngest students, K two. I think all students who are coming to the public schools should be wearing masks to cut down. On transmission. I think we all, you know, we know that and, and we can have debates and discussions about. Transmission rates and, and risks to students versus adults, but there will be adults and children in those buildings and they're going home to other family members. So I feel pretty strongly about that. I'm, I'm wondering how we will be determining which staff are in person and. Who is designated as higher risk and which people have to come in and teach remotely and how that gets. parsed out. I think there is a lot to unpack there and I think that, that, you know. I have concerns. And what are the benchmarks by which we're going to be changing course, closing classes, closing schools, closing the district? We mentioned that we don't have that information and that you'll be in touch with Dr. Jet and the public health. But when will those metrics be set? I think it's really important that. I feel like we should be at a place where we could start to determine that. And then, and also when would we know we're going to reopen on the other side? I think we had to determine them in advance, but for example, if a student in, in a class has COVID. Are other students going to be considered close contacts because they might be six feet away and with a mask? Are they considered close contacts? I, oh, I wanted to say one other thing about the remote learning, the district versus the state. I, I've heard a rumor and I don't know if anyone can speak to it about the state. Restricting funding if we choose a remote model. I don't know if that's pure rumor and speculation. But I am concerned also, not only just about the peer groups and the, the connection with educators. And the relationships they may have with families, but the disconnect that could happen between. The hybrid experience that students in the hybrid model would have, would have. With the Brookline education versus what they might get as an experience with a state model of remote learning. Anyways, I think for now, I'm going to call it a day. That's a lot.
Thanks, Jennifer. Helen.
I think I'm going to only ask a question or two. I, some of the things that Jennifer was talking about, I also would like answers to, but. I, I, one of the things I, we have not heard yet is what our population will be in the fall. I'm pretty sure our population will be lower. I would like to know how much lower. Mindy, Paulo may be thinking the ELL population will be for next year because people can't get visas, because people won't be traveling as much. So I, because that can affect that piece, if we know the number. Along with those parents who decide for their own reasons, for whatever reason, to do remote learning. Could lower our population in classrooms to the point where we could get. Fifteen kids in a classroom and not have to spend the extra money for teachers for, to split a class. And I think it's a really critical piece to know. Because we may have to hire teachers to, to do some of this stuff. So to know this now and to get people to commit. Because I do think, although I, I know I saw on the chat, some people don't think, I do think if people can commit. For six months to one form or another. We will have a much more stable population in both and the ability to do both better. The in-person and the remote learning. Also by knowing the population, we may be able to get more kids back into school, more grades. So I think it's a really critical piece that I find missing and wasn't on the list of to do's. So I, I'll, I think I'll stop there.
Helen, I could speak to that a little bit. I think, knowing our enrollment. I believe was on our next step slide when we talked about the survey in particular and families committing. But in speaking with Megan Gamy, who's our coordinator of registration and enrollment. We do, we have seen a slight. I guess decrease in the amount of new enrollments that she's seen over the summer. You know, that could be due to a variety of things, one being we haven't voted on our plan yet. So families don't want to, you know, make a decision. Yet. So that could be one of them. Visas could be another. I think it's kind of, you know, presumptuous, presumptuous of us to assume. What families are thinking before we actually get a commitment from them.
I was going more by the nineteen percent who said under no circumstance in your first survey.
Yeah. So it was about sixteen percent of families who said that they would choose the remote option. And that was a survey that we sent out in the middle of July. You know, things are changing, as you know. Every hour it seems here. So I wouldn't want to put, you know. A lot of stock yet in the, in that survey before we. Let families know what the exact plan is, right? Before they've committed, but obviously it's a data point that we're using. And we do, Megan does think there could be a significant uptick in enrollment in her office and phone calls and, and meetings. Once we actually put a plan out there. So she thinks there are some families holding off. Because she's used to seeing a lot more foot traffic. Foot traffic, I guess, than usual. In the summer than she's seeing right now. She also mentioned that we do have a lot of families and maybe Mindy could speak to this as well, that transition and during the school year. So we want to make sure that we have space if those families want to come in person to the hybrid model or if they're. Free K to two, you know, fully in person, we need to just make sure those numbers are in our equation as well when we think about spacing.
But I, it, it's going to be, I mean, this is an unusual year. Yes, under any other circumstance, of course, they come into school and we. We teach them, but maybe we need to, to think a little differently. In terms of kids who come in throughout the school year.
Yeah, we'll also do the, what's called the rollover next week where we take all of our data from. The past school year, so nineteen twenty and roll it over into twenty twenty one, which includes all the students who may have withdrawn for specific reasons. So we'll have a, a much better predictor next week when we get all of that data.
I mean, it would be nice to have that when we're voting on a plan. I don't know if it's possible to get that sooner because I assume you just use the numbers you add. At the end of the year to roll it over, no?
That's a little bit more complicated with withdrawals and, and things like that, retainments and all of that. But yes, we can have, you know, an estimate. Sure.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you, Erin. David.
I just want to start by following up on what Helen was just saying, how it would be very helpful to know what the populations are. I understand that families have not yet necessarily committed. But perhaps if we set a date for families to make a commitment and there could be flexibility around that. But it would allow us to plan better if we know the sizes of these populations. So I would try to see if there's a way to not leave it totally fluid. So that we can have some better degree of certainty around what the numbers will look like. Then in terms of my question, so looking at the presentation. I feel that tents and outdoor learning were a little more minimized than I would have liked to see. For example, I know that in some countries, there is an article that was posted on Facebook about Pakistan. And how outdoor learning is occurring there. And I'm just wondering why we can't make an effort to. Try to, you take advantage of the weather in September and that we currently have. A lower community spread than most of the country to try and give children an opportunity. To bond with their new classmates, with their new teachers. I think that's extremely important at the beginning of the year because realistically, unfortunately. We'll probably at some point have to transition to greater numbers of students in remote learning, if not full remote learning. I think that's a likelihood for the winter, but we're not there right now necessarily. And so we really ought to try to maximize our ability to cultivate those relationships. Because if children and their educators and their classmates don't have the opportunity to build an early rapport. It's going to be difficult for there to be that mutual bidirectional buy-in later in the year. If it transitions fully to remote. I think that we have a lot of space in Brookline, open space where students can gather. I would like us to think beyond just playgrounds at schools. There's Lars Anderson, there's Skyline, there's Waldstein Park, there are a lot of parks. And I think that we could accommodate a lot of students safely with proper six feet. Distance between each student, maybe even greater distance than that. There, there really is more space. If we think about this from the perspective of. All outdoor areas in town. And we could probably utilize that in September, maybe October, perhaps even November. And that could allow that important opportunity for student interaction with teachers. I, I get a little bit nervous when I hear that we are going to prioritize some students over others. I, I definitely understand the motivation for those types of statements. I am sympathetic to them, but at the same time, we have to remember that we owe all of our students a high quality education. All of our students deserve an opportunity to get to know their teachers and their classmates. All of our students have social emotional needs as well as academic ones. So I, I want to make sure that we're not focusing predominantly on groups who are deemed. High, high need. Regarding high need, I, I'd like to have a better sense of what that exactly means, highest need. My guess is that we're probably referring to students on five oh fours and I E Ps, but perhaps a broader definition. So it'd be helpful to fully flesh out what that means. In terms of the monitoring metrics for when we transition from one plan to another. I, I think it would be helpful to hammer that down. I understand there have been some conversations. With Dr. Jet around that. And also there are some states and federal guidelines around this. We often hear about five percent community spread being a metric that's used. In some states, they are using that five percent metric and they're deciding to begin the year with full remote learning. But those are states where the community spread is much higher than in Massachusetts. So for example, Arizona is mostly beginning with remote only, but they have eighteen percent. Community spread in Massachusetts, we're at about two percent now. So would we be looking at that five percent metric or are we going to go with something different? Then another question I have is around how summer school has been working. So right now, we actually have students already in the buildings. I, I know it's very limited, but I think if we could have a better idea as to what that looks like, whether any problems have cropped up. Whether we know of any suspected COVID cases among students who are currently enrolled in summer school. And what precautions have been taken for those students. And then finally. Regarding the K two sample schedule. I've had an, an early educator express some concern about whether students can focus. Kindergarten students, for example, can focus for a sixty minute block of time on one subject and then transition directly to another. Sixty minutes is sometimes longer than the traditional high school block. So that seems to be asking for a lot. So I'm just wondering if you could go into more detail. About the thinking around these sixty minute content blocks for kindergarten. I know that's a lot, so I don't mind repeating certain questions when we get to that.
I could just jump in on the content block and I think Asa probably wanted to as well. So a content block is an hour with a focus, but it doesn't mean that it's an hour of sit and. Experience an hour worth of instruction. It's usually changing activities every probably ten to twelve minutes. So we blocked it as an hour of math, but it could be that kids are rotating to multiple, well, they weren't going to move. But kids are rotating activity multiple times within that hour in order to maintain focus. And it wouldn't all be just an hour of direct instruction. And it would also include intervention groups. And again, we also may be adjusting those times as we begin to, or continue to develop the, the schedule. So Asa, I'm going to pass it to you.
So I, thanks, everybody. And, and Dave, I do, David, I do agree that like, we really do need to be thinking about what's the holistic experience every kid in Brookline. Is going to be able to make, but we are particularly beholden to the students with high needs. Whether it is access to schools through a five oh four in the ADA, whether it's through FAP or an I E P. Whether it's because we've, you know, as a community. Have real problems around, you know. Fully implementing anti racist or anti bias curriculum or pedagogies in our classroom or just core beliefs. We do have to make sure that legally and morally, we're making sure that. Everybody who comes to school has full and total access. And tents onsite can provide some of that. But I worry that if we're thinking too far afield like Lars Anderson or places that aren't immediately accessible to toilets. Or, you know, special education classrooms that we're really, how do we even get kids there? And once there, how does every child have full and total access to those sites? I, I was talking to Erin Gallantine today and Helen and Matt when they were at Heath. And just thinking about what are the closest ranged out places, open green spaces? That are accessible and can be in an imminent domain kind of way, really reserved. For school use so that kids can have that access and have that kind of tether to the actual school building, but not be so far afield. That they don't have any access at all to their, to what they need. And, and while Heath School does not in particular at this time have kids who have particular access. Issues, I know most Brookline schools do, and we want to be able to be prepared for anybody that comes in. I work tents while exciting and I, and I agree, they offer these breakout spaces for all kinds of great things to happen. And, you know, I'll take, I'll take some for sure. I want to make sure that we're not thinking about whole classrooms being all day in a tent. I worry that what will happen is that we've worked so hard as a district to really move our, our teaching along. So that it's so tech integrated that we'll lose some of that and, and really be asking folks to radically rethink how they're actually teaching. Without the tools to do so outside. But I am extremely invested in having this be an opportunity. Where teachers and myself included and students and parents come together and really rethink how we're using kind of the natural world. So I think there's a ton of opportunity here. But at our core, we have to continue to consider kind of that, the core beliefs of our district. But at our core, we have to continue to consider kind of that, the core beliefs of our district, which is making sure everyone has access, being anti-racist, anti-bias, and really making sure that we are using tech to serve and not just throwing it to the wayside because we have no choices right now. So then I agree, it's complicated. Those are some of my hot takes on those things.
Thanks, Asa. If I can just add your question about high need students, David. So the, Desi has given some specifics and outlined who falls into that category. So when we take that definition and look at our populations, they're mostly our students who are in sub-separate programs. They do list out, I think it's five categories of students to consider. But knowing that not all districts have the space, the resources, the people power to serve all five buckets of students in building, they have asked us to prioritize a certain group. So when we look at what those parameters are, they are our students who are at Lincoln in the ALC program, BEEP and RISE and BH, sorry, BEEP, Runkel and BHS students in the RISE program. There are also our students in the THTLC program at the Ridley School. And we do have a number of sub-separate programs at the high school also that fall under that category. Jennifer, you had a question about the remote program from Desi. We too feel more confident in the curriculum that we already have developed by our own educators and using our own educators to develop a future curriculum. But we do want to take a look at what Desi has put out. They have been late in terms of telling us who it is that they have partnered with to develop, to put forth that program. Or I guess they have a couple of programs that don't put forth.
Thank you, everyone. Barbara, you're up.
I just want to echo first what Jennifer said about the state program. I do think it's worth looking at, but I think that the program that we would create for remote learning would be probably very much like what was going on in the classroom. The students would have the same kinds of subjects. We have no control over, I assume, the curriculum in the state program. And while it would be applicable to the grade levels, it might be somewhat different from ours. So I would say, I would be for doing our own unless there are very good reasons not to do that. I also would like to say that I, I think we have to be very careful if we, I think we need to be very clear with parents that they are committing for a certain length of time, whether it's a marking period or six months. Because I can just imagine that school will start and after three or four days, some child will come home and say, but my friends aren't there. My friends are doing X, Y, or Z. And the parent will want to switch the child to another setting. And I think that could happen in, could happen over and over again. And I don't think it's a good plan to have. Finally, as I've listened to all of this, I keep wondering whether we have enough staff to do everything we need to do. We've got remote programs, we have some in-school programs. You are, I think that, that I would be very worried that we don't have enough people to cover all of this. Because you also need subs. What happens if someone is sick? Do you cancel the school because they're teaching remotely? No, you can't do that. You have to have someone who's in there subbing. So I, I think we need to really look very carefully at the staff that is returning, at what the specific needs are, including Paris, because that's a huge category that we may need more of in fact than usual. And do we have enough? Do we have enough money to pay for what we need? And if the answer is yes, we have enough money to pay for what we need, can we find the people to fill these slots? And you can't wait until the last minute because this is going to be something that I think will, will affect all kind, all school districts. And I think most school districts will be trying to hire up everybody they can. And I think we need to be working on that.
Thanks, Barbara. Other school committee members who haven't spoken yet. Mariah.
Thank you. I can't second enough my enthusiasm for greater consideration that would, what appears so far for outdoors and for what it can enable in terms of in-person learning. I, I agreed wholeheartedly with what David said about offering education to all our students. And while we want to prioritize, we need to prioritize everybody to some extent. We need to make sure that every student has what they need. I have a specific question about the scheduling. The 300 minutes a day, does snack and recess count as time in learning time?
I don't think so.
So when we have the 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM day, but for kindergarten, we have snack and recess for 45 minutes and K through two and maybe up higher than that has snack and recess for 30 minutes. How are we meeting the 300 minutes a day if we have a half hour to 45 minutes taken with other time?
Well, I think I need to check with Desi on that because they've been flexible on a whole bunch of things. So we have to meet the 850-plus hours. So we will recalculate, but I don't think that time counts. But I will have to, I will have to make sure of that.
Thank you. And I, I would hope that we don't try and push them on that. I would hope that we extend our day to enable us to meet that actual learning time. And then my final question is just generally, it's just a comment really about the scheduling, which is when I look at the blocks of time and I realize that blocks aren't necessarily the way things are being, going to be done in practice. But I guess I, I don't, I don't see things that make me think that we're talking about socio-emotional learning and physical wellness. It seems a lot very sedentary for a lot of it. Like I looked at the kindergarten schedule and there's only 30 minutes of PE a week. It seems to me also that like we've had log, big discussions in the community this past year about, about the balance of math and ELA versus social studies and science and the balance of socio-emotional in kindergarten. And I don't see those reflected here either. And so I guess I kind of wonder what's going on with that and how, how these schedules reflect what we've been talking about as a community. And then I just want to say one last thing about just reflecting on something that Asa mentioned about how outdoors is not tech-integrated. And I guess I, I feel more that we should be having a sense of socio-emotional wellness in our, with our kids is more important to me in a sense of community and a sense of belonging over tech. And so that's, that's my, my end of my comments.
Question, could I jump in with an answer to Jennifer that I'm going to lose it if I don't say it? Yeah, we're right. Yeah. You had a rumor that the state indicated that it was going to be restricted on funding. That, I don't think that's a rumor, but it's not state, it's federal. Federal funding may come with strings attached if the district goes all remote. Also, sports, if you're all remote, you are not allowed to participate in sports. So that's those are those, I wanted to make sure I said that so that you would hear that.
Andy?
Yeah, so I've got one question and one comment. The question has to do with the beginning of the year assessments of students returning to school. I think we're going to have a lot of kids coming back with trauma and regression, both in special ed and in general ed. And I'm wondering whether we're planning to sort of build in some time to do these assessments in a more intensive way than, than we would in a normal year. So that's my question. For my comment, I think I would just back up very strongly what Helen and David were saying about the need for, to ascertain our in-person enrollment. I do wonder whether it's too early to be telling 10 whole grade levels right now, like third grade and up, that no, you're not coming back to school full-time because we don't have space for you. It's too early because we don't know what the in-school population is going to be. Because we don't know how many families are going to opt for remote learning. And I don't think we can ask families to opt in or out of remote learning until they have a clear sense of what remote learning will be like, right? So I think the sequence of events that would make sense to me is first, we get the families some really detailed information about the remote learning plan. Second, we ask families to commit to remote or in-person learning. And then knowing how many students actually want to be in the buildings, we can do our utmost to accommodate as many grade levels as possible full-time. Right? With the understanding that the plan that was presented today, where only pre-K through two are there full-time, is a kind of worst-case scenario as long as community transmission stays low. So that to me seems like a reasonable way forward, given what we know today.
So I can quickly address the question regarding beginning of the year assessments for special education. So we know that we will have students who have regressed. So for one, we did offer ESY in-person this year for some populations. So hopefully that helped bridge some of the gaps there, but we know that it doesn't bridge it all. And for some students who didn't qualify for ESY, we'll see some regression. So we do plan on assessing students using curriculum-based measurements and other ways to assess where students are at so that we can begin to think about a compensatory services for a group of these students. I can kick it off to anybody, principals or the members of OTL here in terms of beginning of the year assessments. Before I do that though, I think it's important for the principals, school leaders who are here to speak to what, what the challenges are to bringing every single student back to our buildings logistically. At the same time also, and I appreciate the push here, Andy, for us to think about and others, a longer school day and what that means. If we go to a hybrid model, if that is what the committee approves, principals in short become logistical managers. There are a lot of logistics involved in landing a schedule that gives an equitable experience for all of our kids. I can't tell you the number of hours thus far and brain power that the principals have put into thinking about a hybrid model. I fear that if we wait to, for our enrollment numbers to come in, we will be forcing our school leaders to rush to the beginning of the school year to create schedules that quite frankly, will not be as thoughtful as they are now. And I want to just kick that off and give the principals a chance to chime in here about that. I think delaying a decision will be detrimental.
I, I think I can jump in. This is Dave Echols, I'm the principal, interim principal over at Driscoll. I think if we're thinking about a full in-person model, I think that's a very difficult task for us to, you know, to pursue right now, especially in a school the size of Driscoll, trying to fit everybody in, even if there is a slight decrease in enrollment. You know, we are still one of the fastest-growing school in the district. And the number, sheer number of students that would be in the school, in the hallways, in the classrooms at one time would make it virtually impossible to socially distance at six feet. You know, we've looked at all of our open spaces and we've looked all around the school cafeteria, gym. It would just be very, very difficult. And I just think it would be unwise to move in that direction. So I think by looking at a hybrid model, it offers us an opportunity to really look at and explore ways in which we can spread out students and try to create some semblance of an equitable education for our students, offering an in-person and a remote model. So we've looked at, the principals have looked at this quite carefully. It poses lots of challenges and I think we're willing to tackle these challenges. But I absolutely believe that a hybrid model does offer us some opportunity for an in-person experience.
Just to jump in, I think when I'm, when I'm asking about sort of the effect of actual in-person enrollment, I also don't have in mind bringing everybody back to the buildings, certainly not right away. I'm thinking more about the possibility that we could actually bring back third grade or fourth grade, right? If, if the enrollment numbers are different enough from what we're thinking about right now.
And I just, too, I want to just answer one to David's question about ESY. Because ESY is at Runkel for the BEEP program and for the RISE program. And it's actually gone beautifully because the numbers are so low. So our typical RISE class that may have eight students in it is currently divided into two classrooms. So there, they do have one-on-one Paris with them, but there's eight adults in a room, four of them being adults, four of them being students. And honestly, it's two classrooms per floor, per wing in the building. So it's really low numbers. That's why it's working. The good news too is that every student is wearing a mask from kindergarten till to seventh grade. The kindergartners have no problem wearing a mask. That's never been a problem at Runkel. And the transportation has been great. I just want to talk about the reality of the hybrid schedule and why it's so difficult to bring more kids back in the upper grades. When you look at that K-2 schedule that was presented, it's, it's a beautiful picture to look at. But when you try to put, for an example, a world language teacher and ask her to teach two sections in the K-2 grades, she's really teaching 18 sections because the class is divided into two times three. Did I do the math right? I don't even want to think about it. But when we make that schedule, then she's no longer able to teach world language to three, four, grades three and four, which is part of her job. So now I'm looking for another world language teacher to teach Spanish. So that's like a real life problem with this setup. Brian? Brian, yeah.
Yes, thank you. So I think were there even to be, I just want to speak to the idea of like adding in additional grades. Were there even to be a marginal decrease across enrollment, you know, that, you know, we, every grade we look to bring back in adds, I think as Donna was alluding to, kind of added layers of complication in how we schedule the spaces we have and the adults we have. And also provide, you know, we are thinking through all of the different locations we might need in our physical plant outside in order to be able to space out recess appropriately, for instance. And so adding another grade full of students for more time adds layers of complication in terms of how students are moving through the building, where they're transitioning to, what spaces are being utilized throughout it. So, you know, I, I think that even if we were to get back numbers that show a decrease in enrollment, I think it's not a commensurate decrease in complication, but rather than, you know, it, it goes up the more grades that you bring back into the building full-time. You know, and I think that this, the, any plan we are producing, right, is a trade-off from the thing that we all wanted, right? Which is all of our students all the time back in our buildings, looking very much like the fall of 2019 did. And so there are trade-offs in all of this, right? And we were always, even when we were all together, trying to figure out ways to perfect that model, right? Mariah brought up the dialogue about the amount of time devoted to ELA and math versus science and social studies. We were always kind of like making, you know, looking at the pie that we had and figuring out what we wanted to go, you know, how much, how we could divide it up. And so I think that's felt even more acutely when we're coming up with hybrid schedules and hybrid models. And, you know, this is ultimately, as Dr. Marina said at the beginning, not a thing any of us are at, are excited about having to decide to do. We want something entirely different, but we're leaning into the complication as we have it right now.
Michelle, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to, Brian led into it perfectly. I just kind of, I want to address the idea around the decisions made to extend certain content areas or to give time to certain content areas. The research is coming out very quickly from the remote learning that happened in the spring. And I don't mean just Brookline, but the national, the big has a 70% loss rate of last year's content if we're not receiving regular instruction in mathematics. And we want to make sure that we're addressing that potential for a 70% loss right up front. In addition, ELA shows a 50% loss for students who are not getting constant instruction right away. So we want to make sure for our earliest learners that we did, we were intentional there. In addition, for an SEL curriculum, we have the morning meeting built in for every student at every grade level, intentionally for that SEL purpose. In addition, we are supporting In addition, we are supporting teachers so that there's intentional instruction and Casey mentioned this before. In the executive functioning area, which does impact students' S E L learning as well. So there was a lot of intentionality around that when we were looking at the schedules.
Thank you. Susan, did you want to speak?
Yes, um, so first of all, I apologize in advance, a tree has fallen on our house. And so there's, um, it's people are taking care of it, but, um, if I might have to go in, in a few minutes. But let me just, before I do that, um, I know, right? Uh, I, I just want to start with, um, an extraordinary sense of gratitude as I've been sitting here for these last few hours. Um, and, and especially to our, our fearless building leaders, um. Asa, David, Torrance, Brian, Donna, Regina, Anthony, Hal. I think, I don't know if I missed anybody. I can't see everybody at one time, but I just, I literally did not think the principal's job could get any harder. I mean, I didn't, uh, bigger, more complex and, but somehow, you know, adding in the expertise in filtration systems and M R ratings. I mean, that just sort of dumps the shark, um, in my opinion. So, so thank you, um, first. And, and you know, I just, I really want to say that we are, I truly believe we are facing the biggest crisis in. The history of public education in this country. I mean, we couldn't educate children with equity in this country beforehand and, you know, you all are on the front lines of this. And I just, I cannot imagine a more talented and passionate group of people to lead our buildings, um, in this time. And get our kids educated and keep them safe. Um, so just again, thank you. Um, I was one more comment and then I just have one question. Um, you know, at this point, my, my, I'm sort of thinking a lot about just the substance of the remote. Learning model, um, educator P D and differentiated instruction. Because under any scenario, just picking up on this last series of comments. There will need to be fluidity between in person and remote, regardless of what we think from the outset. Um, so I appreciate our desire for certainty. I appreciate the desire to survey parents. Um, I appreciate, um, how many parents, you know, asking how many parents will do what and trying to keep them to it. I mean, we all want that certainty, um, and we need it for planning. But at the same time, our desire for certainty is matched by parents' desire for certainty about what's going to happen with their kids. And, and the reality is that like, no one gets certainty, like no one gets certainty. We just don't. Uh, and we're just all doing our very best with imperfect information. It's ever changing. Um, and I'm sure we're in eight weeks, we will look back on this moment and say, wow, can you imagine we thought X? And we have no idea what that X is, but it's, it's, things are going to be, the, 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 the fluidity and the uncertainty is, you know. Really important. So I, I think if we can kind of take that as the baseline and just again, people can fill out the survey. But re- re- remember that a child can be told and, you know, at six thirty P M on a Wednesday. That they can't go back to school for two weeks. And then, and then they're not going back to school. They're not going to their locker. They're not picking up their trumpet, you know, they're not going to school for two weeks. And by the way, the other two kids in that house aren't going to school either. So whatever plans we make has to account for massive swings. You don't just lose one student, you lose three and there's just no way to game that out. Um, on, is it ten percent on any given day, twenty percent, a third, like we just don't know. So I guess to me that like leads me to my question, which is almost, oh, I, I. I appreciate the desire to like know how many kids we're planning for and how many teachers. But I guess my question is sort of how are we plant, knowing that uncertainty? What does our process look like for nailing down the K eight educational model? Um, and I know it's going to be led by the principals, the coordinators, Mindy, um, all of you, um. And it's going to deeply engage teachers, but, but to me, like the, the design principle of it being seamless. And able to flip, um, for a child, for a family, for a classroom, for a grade, for a school, for the district. We don't know. And so I guess what I would hope is that we can kind of use the time. And by the way, we're not going to know by the time we ask parents to make a decision. I mean, we just, we, we won't. We're not going to have all that information. We won't have that certainty. So I guess my question is sort of for Jim, but it's really for all of you, which is how, how do we think about a process? Where the design principle is seamlessness between that experience? And that we are, we, we understand the uncertainty and that, that we're going to be facing. And that we can create a, an educational experience that, that will account for these things. So we don't panic when they happen because we know they will. So, um, it's, it's not a question for this moment, but I think it's just sort of a, a design question, um, of how we're going to. Think about, um, the pedagogical model, um, at this point, um, from, for the next, probably for the next month or so, right, um, through the ten days. Uh, so if people have thoughts now, that'd be great. And, and if it's just something to kind of keep in mind, that, that's okay too.
Um, so I, I haven't had a chance to speak yet. My hand is up. Can I speak? Um, I want to pivot on what's something that, on something that Susan said.
Yeah, Sharon, I was just going to give people a second if anybody wanted to respond to Susan, then I was coming to you. Did anybody want to respond at this time to Susan?
I would just, just say, Susan, I love the way you frame that. Because we all, uh, yearn for certainty in a very uncertain world. And to actually frame it in terms of, uh, thinking about a process that'll get us to seamlessness. And, and how are we, how are we going to actually get there? Uh, you're also right. It's not the kind of thing that we can snap to with an answer. But, uh, but we will definitely pick it up. But my, my immediate response to that is, uh, what the principals did in, in developing their schedules. We have to talk with each other. We have to try it. We have to actually test it out. We have to model it. And, uh, be willing to not have it work and scratch our heads and go back again. This is something we have to, this is like figuring out engineering problem. You have to put your, uh, uh, you, you know, what is your shoulder to the grindstone here and grind it out a few times. It's not an intellectual exercise as much as it becomes a practical. So thank you for, uh, you know, teeing us up.
But my, my apologies, my high schooler, um, thank you for educating her, by the way. Um, the fire department people want you to get out of the house like now. So I'm going to sign off. Um, uh, good luck with all this. I hope it goes well. Okay. I know it's a little crazy. Okay. Go, go, go.
You have Wi Fi outside. Just carry it with you.
Sharon, it's your turn.
So, um, to pick up on just a couple of points. Um, I think that the, I think that what I like about what was presented today is that we've moved away from the theory that we have a choice. Right? Um, and it seems as though we're moving towards a sort of synthesis, right? Where we're going to try to be all things to all people with not enough resources. The concern that I have is some of the assumptions that we're bringing to that process. So specifically to, um, with regard to the hybrid model. I'm not going to repeat anything that's, I have many questions that other people have raised, but I'm not going to repeat any of them. Um, I do think that it's reasonable for us to assume that, uh, for us to expect that all children, including K through two must wear masks. And then, um, if for whatever reason, some subset of those children cannot do so. Then we deal with that and then we get eighty percent wearing masks. Rather than starting off from a, from an assumption that maybe we'll get fifteen to do so voluntarily, right? Um, or fifteen percent rather, not fifteen. Um, so I think we should kind of revisit that. Just assume the K through two is going to be wearing masks. I think that when we're looking at the hybrid model, and this includes everything from tent to tech, to meeting times, to lunches. I think that what we need to do is something sort of like Apollo thirteen, right? Um, where instead of assuming that you have any remnant of the ordinary day schedule, you know, to build off of. You're basically stripping everything away and going with the like, you know, fork, the tin can and the tent that you've got. Right? Um, and, and, and that has some, some significant implications, right? So first of all, like, we need to understand there isn't going to be any P E happening in tents. Because there isn't going to be any P E because P E is a high risk activity. We need to understand that science is not, you know, uniquely suited for tents because tents is not the environment. It's just outside. It's not like a natural space, right? Um, we need to maybe go back to chalkboards, right, and printouts. And maybe we're not going to be able to have screens and whiteboards. Um, and maybe we'll have some sort of a power pack with a camera so that people can see teachers using, you know, chalkboards and whiteboards. We need to step away from the assumption that there's going to be, um, a standard organizational schedule in a school. So one of the things that I want to say most concerned me, um, in the presentation was this, uh, piece. I think it was in the K through eight, uh, schedules. That said that the last period of every, that the reason that, that schools needed to end early was so that the last period could be saved for prep. Right? Um, and one of the things that we need to remember is that, um, under no circumstances. Should we be building into in school time, the opportunity for adults to be together. Right? It's, it's been made very clear by our public health expert advisory group. That if staff meetings can happen remotely, they should be happening remotely. If teacher collaboration time needs to happen, it should be happening remotely. Because nobody is a greater risk to anybody in a building than adults to each other. Right? And so what we've done in sort of our initial thinking through schedules. Is we've actually shortened children's school days by blocking off an entire period of time. For teachers to be together when teachers should not be being together. And we have to find a way, um, for that kind of collaboration time and that kind of team meeting time. And, you know, you know, faculty meeting time to be happening frankly remotely and outside of school hour time. Right? So, um, I don't dispute the fact that that time is essential for school days to function. I do dispute the idea that school days need to end before two thirty if they're going to be in person. Um, be on the grounds that that is something that needs to be happening during that time. Um, so, you know, that's just something to be kind of, like, I think that some of the scheduling pieces. Need to kind of go back to, um, you know, a, a, a more stripped down approach that takes into account. You know, public health pieces, you know, because if we're setting up tents outside and we're not pulling, putting children in them. You know, for instructional time, this thing doesn't make sense. If we're, you know, um, like taking half of the school out, only to put a bunch of adults together in group meetings. That doesn't make sense, right? In terms of like controlling transmission of disease. I also want to say that I have concerns about the district, the ways in which we're conceptualizing sort of the distribution of, uh, academic time. You know, like I would be very uncomfortable, um, with the idea that my kids would be having like a full half of a week. That's set aside for specials and a completely different half of a week that's being set aside for academics. And then a kind of middle day for project based learning that's actually supposed to be integrating both, but doesn't really integrate either. Um, because they've both been allocated somewhere else. And I kind of want to refer back to what Susan says, who's now dealing with her broken house, you know, um. Which is that, you know, whatever, whatever this model is, we basically should be starting off from the assumption. That like the thing that we always have at all times is remote, right? So we should be making substantial primary academics investments in remote. And then when we get to send our kids to school two days a week. Or one week out of, instead of another week, right? That's kind of like a feature that we get to enjoy and do slightly different things with, slightly different things. Um, that is around only under the conditions that like epidemiology, epidemiology allows for. Or that infectious disease conditions allow for, right? Because a kid can be pulled out of it anytime, schools can be shut down at any time, things can be rejiggered at any time, right? So in a way, what we're talking about here is a fully remote model. That has sometime features of like a partial in person, you know, sighting. Right? Where you can kind of do some things and have a different kind of set of engagements a little bit, right? And if you think about it from that perspective, right? If we're like thinking about sort of like re-engineering everything from the thing that we have all of the time, which is remote. And then we're just trying to make this feature that we have work. For, um, the number of children who should enjoy it, you know, that we want to enjoy it, then, then that's great, right? It, it, it takes a lot of the pressure actually off of everybody having to be able to access. The in person model in order to have equity and also is going to improve the quality of the theorized half of the other half of the hybrid learning model. Which we still haven't heard enough about, other than the fact that, you know, with all respect for specials, like, you know, it's, you know, it's the half of time. That P, that's where things are getting chucked, right? So I really do think we kind of need to like rethink how it is that we're prioritizing. The distribution of time in education and also the distribution of classes. Because you know, I think, um, I think David's right, like, you know, I think that this is true for all grades. You can throw four hours of math education at a kid over a two day period. It doesn't mean that they're going to get more than thirty minutes out of it, right? Um, so that's a concern I have. Um, another concern that I have is the fact that there's some pretty fuzzy. Um, capacity discussions that we're having here, and I think that we could be pretty, we could be a lot more specific, right? So, you know, under optimal, so, so, under optimal conditions of even like low level transmission. There's a lot of regulations that are calling for no more than forty percent occupancy of a building, right? So like, we could be engineering towards a best case scenario of a forty percent occupancy and no more. You know, a slightly worst case scenario where we can accommodate, let's say, twenty five percent occupancy. And a like really crappy scenario where the building is effectively closed, but we're keeping it open for seven to fifteen percent of the population. Who must be in school for the delivery of essential services, right? Okay, we actually can, we have a small enough district that we can set targets like that, right? Um, and so, you know, a, and I think it is actually important to set targets like that because we don't. Because it's not safe to run the risk that we're going to have eighty percent capacity demand. And only forty percent safety capacity. There has to be a point where we're essentially saying as a district, there's a cap here, you know? And you're not necessarily going to be able to like choose to exceed the cap on the basis of solely your own choice. This is going to be a conversation with the district. I also think, you know, that there needs to be some considerations and I know that this is a lot of work. And I think part of it goes to special needs and vulnerability issues. But I also think, I mean, I just think it, it goes to other things, like there are conversations that we can have with individual families. About what is going to be the best thing for them, right? Like it may be that a family thinks that the hybrid model is really great, but under a certain set of conditions, the remote learning model might be, like, might be really. Far superior, or they might think that the hybrid learning model is better, but that actually a fully in person model is superior. We can be having those one on one conversations with families, right? And, and I think that that's a really important set of considerations. If we're going to go with the all in approach, like the, the, at some level, the people. I mean, and this kind of speaks to the idea that like people need more information. Well, people don't just need more information about the plan. They need more information about how the plan is going to impact their kid, right? And we don't have that many students in the district that we couldn't actually do this with like some significant subset, especially because a lot of people. A lot of children in the district are going to need to be contacted directly, or their families are going to need to be contacted directly to figure out. What remote accommodations look like for them? Because most people do not have any remote accommodations at all in their I E Ps period, right? And we're going to have to figure, if our baseline is remote learning and every model we're delivering has ro- remote learning. Then that means that every child who has an accommodation in the district. That has any possible need for remote learning is going to have to be contacted before the start of school. In order to make sure that they can access remote learning because it is a core part of our instructional model.
Sharon, I do need to stop you there because I did clarify in the chat earlier that that is not the case. We were following a directive from Desi to include accommodations in I E Ps as those students are learning in school full time. I don't want the public to be.
But we now have many, many, many students in the district who do not have.
Sorry, I can't take many, 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 many. I can't do that. I have to protect our special educators who are protecting our students who have I E Ps. I cannot have you publicly demeaning our special ed program and the services that we have been providing.
Fine. I will simply speak from my own experience and I will say that when I went through the I E P. And I hate doing this, but when I went through this process, it was made very clear that we weren't going to be including accommodations. For a context of remote learning because the assumption of the district was that we were going to be back in schools in September. And while I am only one person, perhaps I am the sole case who experienced that. But I would venture to guess that there are some other families who probably need to be contacted. In order to have some kind of mechanisms or accommodations put into place so that children can access remote learning.
Clarification, but we cannot speak to many, 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 many unless we actually have numbers. It's not fair.
I don't have that data, but I do think that it would be really good for that data to be shared with the school committee. How many children do actually need to have their IEPs or their 504s gone back to in order to include accommodations for remote learning? Okay, I mean, I'm not exactly sure whether
I think, Sharon, I think Jim wants to say something.
I would like to If we're going to have an extended conversation about about special education, special education services during the remote time, let's set that aside and do that as a special thing. Happy to do it. We can do some homework and bring in the data rather than just a anecdotal thing, which then comes perilously close to violating privacy and all that. So can we just move on from here and say, if you want to come back to it, let's come back to it by putting it on the agenda?
I think that we should come back to it, and that's what I was suggesting.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
I would just like to say that those considerations are the things that I think we should be thinking about. I think that what we should be thinking about this model as is primarily remote with the features of in-presence when we can accommodate it. Right? And trying to strip away as much as we can from our typical assumptions and making sure that we aren't building into our schedules opportunities for high transmission between adults. Right? Um, I think that we just need to be really careful about those things.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Sharon. So uh, everybody has spoken once except me, so I'll try to make this short uh, because we are going to go to public comment. And then um, we can come back as a committee and see how much longer we want to talk tonight, knowing that we'll be back here Thursday at noon. Um, so if I could, just indulge me for a minute. Uh, a few, just a few things I want to say is, um, you know, when it comes to outdoor learning, that's a whole thing. And I think we're getting confused about what's outdoor learning and what's outdoors. So there, I just want to, I just want to be kind of clear about that. And I know there are about fifteen teachers who did a workshop on outdoor learning this summer. So they're kind of ready to come back and try some things, you know, even beyond having a garden at our school. So uh, you know, and 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 actually to do outdoor learning, you don't need a lot of furniture and equipment. You can actually use clipboards and little stools or something, and you could be good to go. So I don't want to discourage outdoor learning. Because I think that that's really exciting. In Vermont, they do Forest Fridays. These are people who live by a forest. But, you know, every Friday, the kindergarten class spends all day outside. So I mean, there's some really exciting things going on up here. Um, I just want to make sure that we keep BEEP in mind. We haven't said a lot about BEEP, but I really do uh, want to remind everyone that we are committed to BEEP, because we certainly hope that program goes through, stays on board, and is is actually fairly well-enrolled. Um, uh, I just want to mention, uh, it's come up a number of times that families probably could use some guidance, maybe videos, uh, not just uh, links, but maybe some real videos where we kind of teach them about how our days are running, what this looks like. You know, maybe what a math lesson looks like, what a reading lesson looks like, depending on the levels. So I want to not forget our families in terms of keeping them in the loop and knowing that no matter what we have as a model, that we will need their support. Um, I want to make sure we keep teachers at the front of all of this. Uh, make sure they understand how our classrooms are healthy and safe and that they can buy into that, and make sure that we're really clear about what those metrics are and and how we are going forward when we make some of these decisions. Um, uh, I would plug a K to three model, but I know that's not really going anywhere. But I still think that third grade is an if a year, and a third graders could be in-house. I would prefer that, but depends on how much room we have and what we can do with that. Um, and I think, oh, and then my my big question was, and it's to the high school as well, is when there's remote, is that synchronous with the classroom going on? Or is that something different? So in other words, if it's a math class and you're at a remote day, would you be watching that class going on, or would it be asynchronous? Or is it just, you would just not have that day? You know what I mean, Hal?
Yes, um, you know, thi- this is things that we're still working out, but it's definitely going to be, you know, it's not going to be that the the teacher teaches a lesson on Monday to half the class, and then when the other half of the class, the other cohort comes in on Thursday to teach the same lesson.
That's what I wondered.
That is not the case. Well, we we would, we would not even get through fifty percent of the curriculum that way, and that's just not acceptable to anyone. So certainly going to be that there'll be some connection with the teacher to the kids who are in the remote model uh, on that day. So you know, you'll have the twelve kids in front of her on Monday, and the other twelve kids who are in remote on that Monday. Either they'll be in that class using some type of, you know, uh, three-D camera that we're looking at, you know, sort of a camera that that works with Zoom and brings kids into the room, or the teacher will be reaching out some way and providing the lessons in a flip-classroom type of way for kids to be engaged in that same time. And then in the time when it's the uh, student support time, then certainly the teacher is going to be bringing in the kids who are on Zoom at that time, who also will be getting that type of help from the teacher uh, in that lesson. So definitely uh, some, uh, much more of a connection than what than um, uh, between those two cohorts, even whether they're remote or in-person.
Thank you. And is that true for middle school classes? Who would, who would know that? I don't know. Michelle, do you know that? Casey? Okay, well, let's look into
Let me say, Suzanne, sorry, couldn't get off milk quick enough. Uh, no, the high school has been working independently around their instructional stuff, and the middle schools have had and not had a chance to really dig into it at that level. That's because we haven't given them enough time to do that.
Okay, thank you. It's just a question I have when that, when the the time is right for that. Okay, so we are going to go to a public comment. Uh, we have twenty-some names. Some people are logged in and some are not. Uh, so I guess I really want to say a big thank you to all our building leaders, as Susan calls you, and for being here tonight. You're welcome to stay, but it is a work night, so you have work tomorrow. I really appreciate all that you're doing. Just remind everybody, we have six to eight weeks or so before school is going to open, so we still have lots of work to do. Um, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel uh, obligated to do so. And thank you very much for all the work that you're doing.
And I want to express my appreciation as well, and I'll be a little more direct than Suzanne. Go home.
Okay, so we are going to see if we can figure this out. Um, in terms of public comment, uh, I will uh, say the names of people who are coming. And um, then I think, Robin, you're going to let them in. So uh, first is Amy Lindenbrun, and then Kate Goldring. So Amy, are you there?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, okay, Hal's comment just kind of threw me a little. Uh, I feel like every day I'm learning something that um, wasn't said exactly the same the day before, but anyway. Um, I guess my, um, I wanted to thank everyone, and I'm very pleased that the the committee administration have decided to accept, to um, not start school remotely, um, barring any serious change in local case metrics, God forbid. Um, so I think my two main points of discussion, based on the presentation of today, was uh, number one, even with the revised proposal, I'm concerned about giving up live in-person instruction without sufficient justification. Um, I'm also not sure that eight to one would still meet DESI's instructional time requirements. Uh, in the case of, I want to point out that in the case of grades K to two and and high need students, when you're talking about um, their proposed schedule for um, full in-person, um, we're really telling parents that because their teacher of twenty children needs more, needs development prep time, then those twenty working parents, if they, you know, don't have a way to arrange their schedules, are either going to have to choose between working half an hour, an hour and a half less a day per year, which adds up to approximately three full workdays per month, or they could pay for two hundred and seventy hours of additional extended day or other daycare, if that was even available anywhere. So if you just kind of do some math here and you think about twenty working parents in a class and uh, and say that the teacher will be taking two hundred and seventy hours from their in-school time for the school year, you're by extension asking those twenty parents to collectively pay for an additional five thousand four hundred hours of care in the coming school year. And then if the family also has children in grades three, uh, three to five or six, um, then they're also going to have to find a way to supervise their children the majority of weekdays. And of course, I realize that, you know, we can't predict what's going to happen and what kind of other issues can come up. But I'm thinking that maybe parents would rather spend those millions of dollars um, to rent a larger, well-ventilated temporary classrooms for their kids to be in, whether it's outdoor space or finding larger spaces in Brookline or nearby communities. We could start by finding, using outdoor space, and and then we could see what we could find as far as um, anything acceptable, you know, based on the facts on the ground. Um, my second uh, issue was that the current proposal has grade three to eight teachers. Oh, this is the thing was, um, that I was surprised about Hal saying about the uh, it looked like teachers were teaching the same lesson twice in each week, and I was um, in, because they didn't, and I heard that it was because they didn't want cameras in the room. I've heard all kinds of things about that. And um, I was concerned about that. But even without that, I still think that the proposal has major issues involving money, not just the money that we have to spend just to get schools going. I'm talking about parents would have to spend to find childcare or change their jobs or be fired from their jobs. Um, issues of equity with parents that can provide teaching, hiring teachers, sending kids to private school, paying someone else versus parents who don't have the skills or money to pay someone else to do the teacher's job. We have issues of risk in that by trying to avoid children being in close proximity for a full school day, some kids are going to spend time with other adults and children in different childcare scenarios, potentially in introducing new and different risks to the school cohort. Um, and I want to encourage um, that we should really have to make sure that we can find, get extended day to continue to operate um, on the school property with uh, as much of the same classroom cohorts as possible. Um, we also have issues of student attrition. We really don't know what's going to happen in terms of students of means that are going to go to private schools or families moving permanently out of Brookline. So uh, in short, I urge the town to find additional well-ventilated space to bring back all students to full-day, fully classes as soon as possible to rent it or tent it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Katie Goldring, and then Jeremy Block is up after that. Katie, are you there?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Katie Goldring, and I teach seventh and eighth grade health at Heath and Runcle. I wanted to speak to you tonight to call attention to the fact that the K-12 Wellness Department still has no curriculum coordinator. Um, I believe that you are aware that this position was vacated in December of twenty nineteen, and it has been very capably filled by Carlin Waineyama since January of twenty twenty. Her interim position ended June twenty-third and was designated not to be filled. Um, I have been teaching in Brookline for ten years. I'm a very competent health teacher, and I absolutely will need the support of an experienced coordinator to guide me in delivering high-quality health education during this global pandemic. The Wellness Department is three departments in one, K to eight physical education, seventh and eighth grade health, and ninth through twelfth wellness, which includes both health and physical education. Our curriculum coordinator oversees all of these departments with over forty staff members. Numerous administrators, I think it's up to three tonight, have referred to the critical role that curriculum coordinators will play during this unique time of remote or hybrid learning, yet there is no wellness curriculum coordinator to provide this important leadership and ensure equity across online schools. Having no curriculum coordinator for the Wellness Department is incredibly short-sighted, and it will impact every student in Brookline. In the fall, all the wellness teachers will have to figure out how to integrate important skills units like human sexuality, as due to the pandemic, these skills and content were not included during the spring remote learning. This is only one example of why we need an experienced coordinator to guide and support us to deliver this essential education to the students of Brookline. The skills that students learn in health class are some of the most important and necessary lifelong skills for wellness that they will learn their entire public school education. The opportunity to play, learn, build community, and connect through physical activity that students experience in PE is vital for all of our zoomed-out children, now more than ever. In both subjects, students learn valuable social and emotional learning skills, which are critical to their mental health during this pandemic. One coordinator with expertise in wellness can collect all the new safety protocols, especially as those change frequently, and make the most informed decisions for every teacher and student. Our coordinator attends all the necessary meetings to get the most current and up-to-date information and can apply that to our unique discipline. Who will be at the table for us? Who will support us so we can best support our students? Wellness educators deserve the same current information and support as other departments. Why is the Wellness Department being cut during a global pandemic and other coordinator positions were reinstated? For example, the BHS Social Studies and BHS World Language. I feel that without a leader to support us, teachers will not have the connection and support to teach our critical subjects in the virtual world. I implore you to correct the mistake that was made when the K to twelve Wellness Curriculum Coordinator position was left unfilled so that our educators can meet the wellness needs of the students of Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, Jeremy Block is next, and then Acacia Landfield. Jeremy, are you there?
Okay, how's that?
Great.
Okay, thanks. All right, greetings. Uh, my name is Jeremy Block. I'm a teacher at the Coolidge Corner School, soon the Florida Rough and Ridley School. I am the BU co-chair of the Joint Labor Management Committee. The BU cosigned an open letter with over thirty other local education associations in greater Boston. The thoughts that I'm sharing here reflect the broad consensus in that statement. We are calling for a remote start to school and a phased-in approach to in-person learning as the state and the district are able to demonstrate that health and safety conditions and negotiated public health benchmarks are met. Educators want to be in buildings with our students. However, we cannot risk a premature return to in-person learning that will result in educators, students, or their families getting sick and dying. It does not make sense to return to schools when we do not fully understand the risks that the virus poses to children and adults, when standards and plans for facilities are not well-established, when schedules, procedures, and safety plans, staffing plans, rather, are not in place, when we do not have rapid testing and robust contact tracing, and while COVID rates are increasing in Massachusetts. We appreciate that thoughtful conversations have taken place about health and safety. However, there are fundamental questions and concerns that still need to be addressed. This work lies ahead of us. The BU is a willing partner with the district and the community. As educators, we are committed to bringing our students the best possible distance learning experience. We want to develop and plan this thoughtfully and carefully as a collective, well-organized effort. It takes collaboration and it takes time. It takes professional development. Requires leadership and resources from administrators. We would don't want to end up in the situation, again, where we are abruptly forced into remote learning mode without proper preparation. We want to establish our highest-quality distance learning plan now, and then phase in plans for in-person hybrid schedules as we are able to establish and agree on safe and workable conditions. We want to develop close connections with our students and build classroom community. We want to prioritize their well-being, their social, emotional development, and their learning. The first steps can be met, can be to meet with students outdoors. We want to do what is best in these extraordinarily difficult times. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Uh, Acacia Landfield, are you there? And Jeff Richardson, you are next, after that.
Hi, good evening. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, just to touch on some of the pain points um, that were raised earlier by um, the school committee. Um, I just wanted to mention a couple ideas. I don't know if they've been considered. Um, but um, given the unprecedented times, could we get people um, regarding staffing and schedules and and these pain points, could we get people um, with a certain level of training or profiles? For example, a master's degree or PhD in a given subject um, to have provisional or emergency certifications, um, including to help as subs. Um, there's people with expired teaching certificates or various levels of teaching experience in different formats. So how could we engage, um, you know, community members, parents, um, people that are willing to take on some of these roles? It, would that be possible? Just throwing it out there, thinking outside the box. Um, there was a pain point mentioned for world language. I have a master's degree in Spanish, just to throw out as an, as an example. I would be happy to, you know, volunteer myself for world language, subbing, being an outdoor education chaperone for bathroom purposes or keeping kids safe, you know, and secure, given, you know, some of the ideas that are being suggested. Um, and then um, taking Sharon's um, Apollo thirteen approach, which I liked, I just wanted to kind of throw out there, how how can we discard most of the previous things that we've operated for the foreseeable future to get students back to school?
Yeah.
Can you hear you? Can you hear me okay? Sorry. Just going back to basics, how can we get kids back to school including by prioritizing the social-emotional development of our kids first and foremost and reimagining how we can meet those needs for the next one to two years? And to that end, how do we seriously evaluate and carry out outdoor education to the greatest extent possible? Suzanne mentioned Forest Fridays. There's plenty of successful models from environmental education programs to forest schools to more traditional education, but just moving it outside the rented or tented idea. And I really don't think, as someone who actually has worked in educational technology, I don't think that we need tech to do it. We don't need laptops. Kids have spent the last six months on screens. They need to be together and interact in person and not behind a screen. Some states have expansive environmental education programs. So this just seems like a great opportunity to think outside the box and keep kids learning and developing in the coming years by developing and expanding on successful models for outdoor learning. And to close, I just wanted to, you know, remind, this is just, it was a beautiful kind of introduction to the Brookline Public Schools for myself as a parent. It was 15 months ago that our town overwhelmingly came out and supported the kindergarten teachers as they took a stand for the social-emotional development of their students and received nationwide recognition for doing so. And I think that this moment is perhaps even more important than that moment 15 months ago, that when the K teachers stood up. And, you know, for us as a community and as parents and teachers in schools and the district and leadership, for everyone to really prioritize that social-emotional learning, which I think is very possible if we can just, you know, try to remove the rigidity, give teachers as close to free rein as possible, giving them the training and professional development they need, discarding, you know, standardized testing because we don't need it for their social-emotional development. And frankly, if the younger grades spent most or all of the next year in social-emotional learning, it would probably be a really big win, given the last six months. And, you know, we can do this not only because of the pandemic, but also because of equity and equality issues, which are very present on everyone's minds these days. And then, you know, just talk about an opportunity to seize the moment for all kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. We don't see Jeff Richardson. So Elon Wapinski, if you are here, it's your turn. And after that, Nina Makortova.
Hi, this is Elon Wapinski. I'm a parent at Pierce. I'm also a town meeting member here in precinct seven. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and thank you, everyone, for your time and your thoughts. It's been interesting to listen to a lot of these discussions and also I just, I've been filled with gratitude for everyone's efforts here. So it seems evident now that, at least given the proposal that is in front of us here and what things are shaping up to be, that we are going to move towards a hybrid model where some grades are going to be full in-person and some grades are going to be hybrid in-person and remote. And I think that that seems to be what, I guess, the proposal or the administration is saying would work for the most number of people and all the stakeholders, the teachers, the staff. I'm sure that everyone's here aware that there's going to be nobody who's fully satisfied. Well, I guess I am beyond, I don't quite understand, I guess, from this proposal and from this discussion so far is I'm not sure what, what kinds of benchmarks are going to be used to determine when it might be safe for more students to be present in person or for longer, say like beyond the 1:00 PM. And how periodic check-ins will be built into this? Or is what is proposed being set out for the current school year? From what I understand, everyone's saying this is not a baked plan. But when, when we start with this, is it going to be reevaluated after a month or two months or six months? And then also, I guess there's the state of the pandemic. There's a state of what's going on in Massachusetts or in Brookline. But there's also questions about how we evaluate the efficacy of this remote hybrid learning model. What happens if two months in, we discover that some students are just falling way behind, especially in comparison to folks who are in-person? And what happens then? When do we use that as an indicator that we have to change course? And then, and I guess one thing that I feel a component to this discussion that is often not discussed enough, and I think Amy touched on this a little bit, but it's important, of course, to assess the risks of the people in the building. It's the students and the staff members. And one thing that I think is not discussed enough or it's worth at least contemplating further is the risks of this approach, that there might actually be increased of risk of community transmission by having other care providers helping our students while their parents are working and they have to cope at home. That we're actually going to be mixing populations of students because as we already see here in Brookline and other areas in Newton, other, all over the country, in fact, sort of these models where students are kind of being collected in certain areas where other faculty or other staff are in charge of making sure that these remote learners are going through their school days and they're doing it with cohorts of students from other schools and other classes. And then I guess just one as a final note, and what happens during this, the course of this? If some students simply aren't able to log in? Or what are the contingencies? Like if my son or child doesn't log in remote, what happens? Is he considered absent? How many absences will be tolerated? I guess those are some questions that I haven't really heard addressed in these discussions. So again, thank you, everyone. I'm looking forward to whatever proposals people come up with. I really do, I agree that the experience of learning outdoors should be exploited as much as possible. But I'm also, I would also heed that the perfect should not be the enemy of the good enough. And if we can't find enough tents, if we can't find enough spaces, there are probably alternatives that will be sufficiently good to get as many kids in-person as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Nina, you're next. And then Nathan Schrifts after that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for selecting my question. So I think many people probably think and agree that there will be some component of remote learning continuing. And based on the experience that we had in spring, where we feel like it was pretty much self-learning by students and it was very little curriculum-based online teaching going on. So we also involved in Russian math school and over the summer, we took another online remote learning program. And I have to say that what is missing the actual online teaching component because the self-guided tasks are not the same as actually explaining the material. Because, for example, although I do have a PhD, I don't remember how the fractions are done. Like, do I have to explain this to my kid? And I feel like that was not done. And even though there was like a lot of time to do that. So I feel like what I'm looking forward to is to kind of see the potential of some online actual learning. Because even small groups, they were directed toward like well-being and just like, how is your day going, but not really actually like, let's talk about pili-grims. This was your assignment. How do we do writing assignment? What do we write? Like, how do we write? Like, my daughter answered one letter, one sentence, yes, there were pili-grims. I'm like, that's not what you do. How'd you write an assignment? So there has to be some teaching actually happening, even though it's remote, which is fine, whichever model will be going forward. But how do you think this will be ironed out in greater detail? And that has to be like really major effort, like focusing on that part. That's just how many people feel. And even not to mention the struggle of Google Doc, because even for my work, I use a lot, a lot of Google Doc. It was very difficult and I know a lot of parents were just struggling with that. And there was not any like lesson or curriculum to explain, oh, this is how we're going to do this. This is the feedback. How are you going to receive? This is how I'm going to review this. To save this, you do X. Like, there was some online presentation where you couldn't find it. But it has to be more like educating us on how to educate kids if we are like supposed to like do the bare share of this. So this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan, you're up now. And then Natalie Artsy will be after you.
Okay, you can probably hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, now that's better, yeah. And you'll unmute, but as I will echo the prior persons that we needed a tutorial about how to hit unmute here. I guess I have about three comments here and then I'm going to do this pretty briefly. Number one, first of all, thank you all so much. Clearly, there's been an awful lot of work that's been done. You know, parents, I'm a parent of, you know, of some, of two kids who just graduated out of Baker and are moving off to the high school. And it seems as if there's an awful lot of work that's been done about scheduling, which is hugely helpful to working parents. My wife and I both work. So this is incredibly helpful. But I think what's even more important to us is for us to have an understanding about what our kids are going to actually learn this year, whether it's remote or it's in-person or it's hybrid. There's some level of learning, which I think most parents in Brookline want to make sure that their children achieve. This leads to an equity issue because if we don't feel that that level of learning can be achieved, we'll supplement. And that creates huge problems across the district. And it really destroys the whole notion, in my opinion, of public schooling. But we only have one set of kids and our kids, we're not going to fail our kids because we don't have a very good understanding of what our kids are going to learn this year. So we have to make sure that our kids learn. So to that statement, I'd like to ask if it's possible if we can have some learning metrics so that we know what our kids are learning and that it's consistent across the entire district and they're reported back regularly to the parents so that we know what's working, we know what's not working. And there's immediate, we talk about intervention with kids and there's immediate intervention with teachers so that more successful teaching strategies can be learned and applied pretty quickly so that all of our kids have a chance to learn up to the curriculum level that we think is actually achievable this year. Maybe it's not 100%, but if it's 85%, you know, parents have a right to know what the goal is and then how we're going to measure to that goal and where we actually come out. That would give us all, I think, a lot more confidence in what school is going to be for this year. And my final comment, so there's equity. There's, there's, you know, because if parents don't have this, we might supplement. There's also an opportunity, there's also a chance that if we fall short, there might be a number of parents that would choose to keep their kids back, not this year, but next year. That could create some, that could create some real management headaches for the schools. So we want to try to make sure that that doesn't happen. And then finally, 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 my kids are rising ninth graders. So I'm going to, this, I don't generally make personal pleas, a lot of you guys know this, but I'm going to make a personal plea that ninth graders be given maybe a little bit more time at school. They did not transition out of their eighth grades well. It was, it was a really, an awesome fail at a transition out of the K through eights system, at least in my school. And I don't want to see a fail for the transition into the high school. This is the one and only opportunity for rising ninth graders to meet the much larger group of ninth graders coming in and start the new challenges that will be available to them in high school that just were not available to them in K through eight. So if there is some way that we could prioritize in-school learning, at least for a few weeks in September for rising ninth graders, I think that that would go a long way to their, to their social and emotional introduction into the school, into larger groupings and into the far richer, you know, curriculum that the high school offers. I probably used three and a half minutes. Sorry, Suzanne. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. You're okay. Natalie, you're next. Jennifer Cassis, I'm not sure if you're still here. I think you logged off. And Kristin Hung is after that. So Natalie, it's your turn.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for letting me speak. And I would echo the previous people who commented that I really appreciate all the effort. It seems like every possible opportunity is being discussed and considered and trying to make the best out of this and it's not easy. I just want to add one thing, you know? There's been so much effort in the past few months, the last two months of school to make sure kids learn and stay on top of the curriculum. I must say that the first week or two worked out pretty well. But then the expectation for students to learn by themselves and follow through and be responsible did not really work, at least in my daughter's case. And I talked to a bunch of other parents. I think this might be great specific. And the older the kids are, they can be probably more independent and responsible and they understand the consequences of not completing homework. And that speaks to what the other parents said, a couple people before me, that really, what is the metric and how do you make sure kids do not fall between the cracks? I can also attest to the fact that my daughter goes to RSM and we also took a summer class. And I have a bunch of friends who go to private schools and they all transitioned almost seamlessly overnight to remote learning. But the teachers were there. So the teachers were actually teaching as if, it felt as if you're in a classroom and now you actually see the board even better. It's so close. It's on your entire screen. And you have less distractions because, you know, everyone is on mute and you really listen to the teacher. And they learned even how to ask questions and communicate via chat and then unmuting, et cetera. And the teacher even checked that my daughter is following via chat if she did not respond to some of the answers quickly enough. So there are ways to make sure that kids, you know, that one is to really teach the kids and not only provide tasks because that is really difficult then to make sure that people understand and will follow through. And so I think, I think that is something to really consider. And again, on a great, great basis. And my daughter is going up to sixth grade. She's still young. It's not like K to three, but still young. So again, and I spoke to many other parents. It's not necessarily that we think that it should be either hybrid or remote, whatever it would be. I think there should be, most of the teaching should be done as if the kids are in the classroom and we have the technology to do that. I think most families have computers. The ones that did not, I heard that they got a computer from the district. So everyone had access. So it was not really clear why teachers could not teach because it seemed like they spent even more time and more hours than the usual school time. So just trying to accommodate everyone. So I don't know if there's a way really to think about that. Instead of teachers teaching a few times a week the same class, why can't all the 20 kids log in and listen to the lesson as if they're in school? And of course, if we can go back to school at least part-time, it's great. And you all mentioned the reason, so I'm not going to repeat that. But as the other parent said also, if we start remote and then can go more to school based on, again, the situation of the pandemic, we need to make sure that we start strong and kids have access. They see the teachers and they learn as if they are sitting in the classroom. And I think that will make a big difference. As evidently, you know, we've seen in private schools and RSM, that really did that already in April. And so we should be ready to do that hopefully by September or October. But again, I know it's not easy and there are a lot of considerations and probably things that we are not aware of. So again, humbled by all the effort and the thoughts of all of you. Just, it was a quick note from one parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Kristin is up next and then our last speaker is Dominic Nicholas.
Hi, Kristin Hung. I'm a CCS Rough and Ridley parent. And I want to echo the strong recommendation for a universal masking policy that others have brought up, in part from my perspective as a physician at MGH and the lessons we're learning there. As a parent, I'm really grateful to all of you for focusing on the unimaginable breadth of issues tonight so that I can focus on this one small but important thing. The CDC advises masks for everyone over age two. So I feel it's pretty arbitrary, the second grade cutoff for mandatory masks. I'm open to hearing why Dussie recommends that and why we're following that. I feel like not requiring masks for B through grade one students puts everyone at risk, particularly if you're bringing back all of K through two for full in-person instruction. It seems incongruous to bring back all the learners who are the least capable of distancing themselves and not require them. It seems incongruous to bring back all the learners who are the least capable of distancing themselves and not require them to wear masks. Children will spread it, they will bring it home, we will have a surge in our community when school starts, I guarantee it. We're preparing for it. Also, we need to protect our staff, protect our workforce, or none of these models will, will work. At the hospital, that was our priority, was to protect the workforce so that we could continue taking care of patients. Finally, children do get sick, some get very sick and some have died. We don't know everything, but for now, we know two things based on our work at the hospital. Number one, masks work. There's now published data from MGH and Brigham showing us that when the universal mask policy was instituted for our hospital network, our employee infection rates dropped in the midst of a statewide surge and growing infection rates among the general public. And this is in the midst of our own employees caring for the sickest of COVID patients. The second thing we know is that masks only work when universally and properly used in conjunction with hand hygiene, physical distancing, all the other logistic nightmares that you are all working on. But masks are fundamental. More recently, there are known outbreaks in the hospitals across the state traced to employees who did not adhere to the universal masking and distancing policies, particularly while eating. So this brings the lunchroom issue. I think there should be some attention paid to what goes on during lunchtime and snack time for the children and the teens. To be very clear though, wearing a mask, and I think we all understand this now, but I want to reiterate, wearing a mask does not protect the person wearing it. It protects others. It decreases the risk of spreading disease by someone who is unknowingly infected. And that's why it only works if everyone wears one. The younger children, in my opinion, are at highest risk for spreading the virus. But purely by definition, because they are young, they can't stop touching things, including and especially their face, their noses, their mouths, sometimes other children's faces, noses and mouths. Teachers cannot spend their time just making sure everyone is not touching each other. Can you, I cannot even imagine the beep in kindergarten classes without masks. Requiring our youngest learners to wear face coverings at the very least can help them remember these hygiene rules, decrease transmission rates, make everything safer for staff and students. At the hospital, it's inconceivable for anyone to be without a mask. Healthy children aren't actually even allowed to step foot inside because they are vectors of infection. Our students have to be in school, the benefits are critical, but we need to do what we can to protect them and the community. I think of universal masking policy, it's effective, it's feasible, it's very low hanging fruit, it has to be the default, in my opinion. So I just, I ask that we revisit it seriously for the younger students. We can get more creative about it, we can work around the obstacles, I know there are reasons for the recommendation. But we should at the very least consider an opt-out policy rather than an opt-in. I think we can make it safer for everyone, so thank you for considering. Thank you again so much for doing all this difficult work.
Thank you Kristen. I think Joanna Messing and Dominic Nicholas are not on, so I think we've gone through all the people who have signed up and who are still.
Suzanne, she is on.
Who is?
Joanna is on.
Oh, okay Joanna, it's your turn Joanna Messing.
Yes, hi, thank you very much, this is Joanna Messing, I'm the parent of a rising seventh grader at Lincoln. And I'm quite emotional about the situation, so I'm going to try to be positive and clear in what I'm saying. I am first of all deeply appreciative of all of the work that you and the staff have put in and really want to recognize the passion and time and effort. However, especially just hearing the doctor who just spoke, I feel like we're forgetting that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And when we're talking, I'm hearing that the priority is to get back to school. But for me, what about the priority of the safety of our children, our teachers and our families? So for me, the question is about, how do we maximize a learning experience in a once in a generation crisis? When we're talking about tracking rates and thinking about going back to remote if rates go up, these are not abstract numbers, this is my child. This is me, this is you, these are, this is our community that we're talking about. And as a parent of a 12-year-old, I was very responsible normally. He is not staying six feet apart from his friends, they are not wearing their masks responsibly. This is a 12-year-old, I can't even imagine the younger children. So I would really like to strongly encourage that we take Sharon's suggestion to really look at this from a blank slate and think about how we build and assume that we're planning for fully remote with potentially some additional in-person or possibly leave at risk or people who really need it in person. I'd like to strongly support the Brookline Educators Union, who is speaking out about going fully remote. When we talk about the chaos and uncertainty that this year brings, one thing which would reduce uncertainty is to say, like Somerville did, we're going to go fully remote. And we're going to go fully remote until we know it's safe. We're not going to bring people back and then suddenly jerk them out when people start dying and getting sick around us. We're going to go fully remote, we're going to make it the best learning experience that we can. We'll leave the in-school space for those kids who really deeply need it. And as it gets safe, we slowly phase in, but let's start thinking about the safety and wellbeing of our children and ourselves and our community and do the best that we can in this situation. We will certainly be choosing the remote option for our child, so of course, we have specific questions about what that looks like. But I really urge you to encourage you to, to think about this moment that we're in and the extraordinary circumstances that we're under and to make the most of it by going remote. Thank you very much, and again, deeply appreciate all of the thought and effort and time that you're putting into this, and I'm happy to speak to any of you afterwards if you would like to hear further about our opinions, thank you.
Thank you Joanna. I believe that's the last speaker that we have signed up, Robin, do you think that's true?
Yes, I think that's true.
Okay, just to remind the public that we will be having, listening to public comment on Thursday, probably at noon, 12:05. So please sign up, and you can do that through Robin Coy. Robin, what's the deadline for that signup, did we extend it a little bit?
Currently, the deadline is Wednesday at noon.
Yeah, can we make it a little later, can we make it like five on Wednesday?
Four, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so we're done with parts one, two and three. Jim, you might want to just step in and kind of get us where you want us to be. And I don't know if you're in overload, Jim, you want to keep going, you want to call it a night, what, what is your pleasure?
Well, I, unless someone else has something that they feel they really want to talk about, I think we have enough information. I mean, certainly enough feedback, I appreciate the feedback, I appreciate the tone and from the, from the parents that, families that called in the public comment. I think that, and this is what I would like to, I would like to take the information. I mean, I wrote everything down, and I'm sure others did as well, so we'll, we'll have a complete take and review all of these. And really, when we come back to spend a very short time, because there should be some accountability here. That we should look, we should review these and, you know, we obviously are not going to be able to incorporate everything, but we should at least address everything and, and have a response. And then, and then I think the, if there's any additional information, because we're going to have that blueprint. And that blueprint is going to be, you know, pretty detailed, we want to include this. Before anything gets finalized, we want to have another conversation, I think, with, with the committee. And then, you know, we have, we, we have to submit to the state. So, and, and the school committee has to, to, to vote on the plan that we're going to implement and how we define that plan, how we describe that plan. The, the committee can do, but we do have to have something in writing because the, the commissioner is going to hold every community accountable. And if there's remote teaching going on, the commissioner is going to hold the, the remote learning accountable, accountable for the standards that we talked about at, at very, very, very beginning. So I won't go through them now, but he's going to, he will be holding that accountable for high quality. And then we have to move, so as far as the plan is concerned, then the, the, the school committee will need to vote. And then I will need to submit to the state. That's, that, that's where we're going with this, and we can do, we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday where we can get a review of the, of the feedback. We'll, we'll present to you how we've looked at that, and if there's other things you want to tell us, tell us, so that we will go through it and bring it back to you with probably adjustments that we feel appropriate, there'll be another iteration until we get to a place where, okay, we think we, we're at that place, we'll submit, and then we need to go toward a memorandum of understanding. Because that has to be in place before we'll be able to implement as well.
So I would just, I, I just might suggest that to add on, instead of to redo all of the slideshow that perhaps we don't need.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That takes up an hour, so I'm just.
That's a very good point, that's a good, we will not, we will not redo the whole slideshow, we'll look at where the adjustments are.
Okay, thank you. I think David and then Mariah, David?
Yes, I would just like to mention that because there are so many people who wanted to offer public input but did not necessarily know about the deadline, Ann Teis has done an excellent job of collating comments and questions from YouTube and Facebook, among other sources. If we're not going to get to that now, what I would like an opportunity to do is run through it and try to pick out what seems like questions and comments, and then perhaps during the public comments period on Thursday, if those individuals don't have an opportunity to sign up in advance, we could incorporate their questions and their comments into our meeting. Because I, I do think it's important that everyone have an opportunity to participate.
Sure, i- if you thought it would be timing-wise useful, if you had, I don't know how many questions are, Rob, but if you were able to comb through and find questions and send them to us, we may be able to get some responses to those questions. People are still entitled to speak, but we may be able to respond to those questions to, to save some time. We'll do that in writing, question, answer, question, answer, kind of thing.
I, I like that approach, I think that would be helpful because a lot of people in the public comment format get frustrated that they ask a question, but then they don't get an answer. And I think what they're really looking for is not just the opportunity to ask, but to learn something about what it is that they're curious to.
We could actually post, we could, we could post the question and the answers, we could actually do that. I mean, we obviously can do that, if that's helpful, we'll do it.
Mariah?
Thank you. Before we go tonight, I really hope that we can talk about what our timeline is for the near future and then going out a little bit, because I think there's some critical steps that need to happen that we should agree on, and, and some of them are, hopefully, Jim is going to send an email out to the community, to the, to the caregiver community tomorrow with the slides and, and any update. And I am hoping, I feel like the community, based on the feedback we got today, hasn't had enough time to absorb and react to the materials that they really just received possibly an hour before this meeting and possibly during the meeting, but, and some of them haven't seen it all. I've got thousands and thousands of parents, haven't seen any of this at all and haven't had the chance to react to it. And I would like us to actually defer our vote from Thursday to early next week, I feel like we're going to be hearing many, from many other more people on Wednesday and Thursday, and we need to be able to, to respond to that. And then I'd also like us to have a timeline that, that is, I'm hopefully in Jim's communication tomorrow, but latest Thursday, that's very clear, that talks about when we're going, you know, August 10th is in the, there's a timeline in the slides, but then what is the point by which parents are going to need to decide which model that they opt into? I think that people want to have that date on their calendar so that they're looking for the the email, the survey link that takes them to doing that. I think parents need to know, and this is something that Sharon I think touched on earlier, is homeschooling. And I think, and, and this was the question of how many, maybe it was Helen who asked us about how many people are, are in school and unenrolled. I think a lot of people have no idea that homeschooling is actually a thing that you need to let the district know about, and there's rules to that too. And so, and so there's a whole bunch of people who might have that in their mind, but haven't said anything, right? So we need to be very clear with people about what that even means, like that homeschooling doesn't mean you do whatever you want, right? And so we need to have very clear communication from the district, if that's what people are opting into, and a lot of people are talking about this, either as a one-off or as pods or whatever they're up to, then we need to make sure that that's in our timeline as well. But I just think that like, given the tight crunch of time from now to September 16th, we need to map that out very carefully for ourselves and for the community. What those are.
See if this makes sense, then tomorrow, the, the slides are already posted. But tomorrow, I can write a brief letter. But in, in the body of the letter, talking about, you know, if people want to opt for remote, then they'll be able to, we'll have to see about a timeline for us. But in terms of homeschooling, I would probably put that if, that a number of people have asked about homeschooling, if you're interested in learning more about homeschooling, call this number, go to this link. Because there, there are ground rules around that, the district has to approve the program, has to approve the course of studies and has to have some confirmation of how, or that the work has been done and how that's going to be monitored. So there are, there are ground rules around that, but in my letter, I will just reference where they can get information, I'm not going to give information about the homeschooling in the letter. I think that's going to be, that could, that could generate a confusion, homeschooling and being home remote could confuse people, so the, the, a remote decision would be, you're in the public schools, but you're going to receive your instruction through distance learning. Homeschooling is you are not part of the public schools anymore, and, and your, your, your education, though it has to be approved by, by, by the school committee, but through the school department, the school department approves it. But they are no longer part of the public schools, and so I don't want to put that kind of stuff in the letter, I'll just give them a reference. Go to this, call this number or go to this website to get the information if you're interested in learning more about homeschooling.
Helen?
I have two thoughts. One, with regard to your letter and maybe helping us to move further on. If we would put, possibly put in a link to a registrar who could, and if people know today, they only want remote, no matter what, they could tell us, they could tell the registrar who is keeping the numbers. I think that would be the, the most direct and easy way to get that information. At least it, for those who know today, some people may not know, some people may need more time, that's fine. But, you know, just to help us to start in the counting. The second piece that I was thinking about, 170 days is a minimum. It's not, I mean, just like 180 days is a minimum of what we have to provide. And I'm not exactly sure why would we be taking those 10 days with good weather outside and not maybe slowly integrating classes in over that time period? Why do we have to wait 10 days? And I'm not sure, okay, I'll let you answer, sorry.
Okay, those 10 days were negotiated between the commissioner and the teachers' unions across the state. And those 10 days are, are there for planning purposes and they must be used on the front end. You have to use them, the, and school has to start by the 16th of September, unless you get a waiver, 16th of September. And those 10 days which were negotiated are dedicated for planning, we can't use them for other purposes.
But if our teachers were willing or interested, could we do it?
If you want to call it a training day, we could definitely, I, I would imagine we could do that, yeah.
And I say, I, I really think Helen, that our teachers need that time. There are some teachers that are not trained fully on the platforms that we are now insisting that they use. Like we have middle school teachers who have not received the training yet to go to Canvas, and they need some of that time to do that. We have, we need that time to organize. We have, we need that time to organize um grade level so that they're all on the same page. I, I think that time is critical. I mean, I don't know if we have to use all ten days, but I definitely think we need time.
And if I'm not mistaken, uh, okay. I, whatever, I mean, I understand that, and I do think we need some training, but I don't know if we need all ten and the other.
Or it could be used creatively, like one of the parents had mentioned, or might have been a school committee member, about how important it is to create a community with parents um to share information. If it could be community and parent meetings, I think that's a great way to use that time. Like having parent meetings by grade level with the principal and the teachers so that we could train parents how to use those platforms so that they may start this school year all on the same page.
And, and following up on that, maybe to use it with individual kids. The teacher meets with each kid individually for, you know, fifteen minutes or so to talk about what it's gonna be like when you come back to, when you come to school, some of the things.
I, I, are those terrific ideas? But I just want to remind you that those ten days were negotiated uh with the commissioner and the unions. And they were, and, and so they're gonna be used for training. And uh it's, if that training includes some of the stuff we're talking about, then that's terrific. Uh, but, but we can, we can broach that, but I don't wanna set the false expectation. Teachers are very angst about the beginning and how they're gonna go about it as well. Because if, if there's some uncertainty that's being felt by the community, it's also being felt by the teachers. So they need to really get, get together on some of this.
Jennifer, then Barbara?
Beep or they're separate?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I.
I thought you had done Helen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, it just, it dawned on me as we were talking about it, sorry.
So, you did Helen real quick, cause I'm, I was talking over you and I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
He said it's also true for beep, that those first ten days, because they're not on the same schedule. Beep, early childhood is different, I think, Regina.
But their child, but their, the teachers are Unit A members, Helen.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so the only comment I just wanted to add on is just in thinking about this, I still think that there are a lot of details families are gonna need in order to decide if they are definitely gonna be remote. I think there's a lot of really big questions that haven't been answered yet, and we need to get more information. So I would, I don't know that I would, I would delay requesting that information from parents, not in this letter that we're talking about now. I mean, just, just, I don't think we're gonna have the information for, for people to decide if we're talking about sending this out tomorrow.
But some people already know, right? Some people already have decided no matter what.
I, 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 I think I will send a letter that uh sort of recaps a little bit of where we are in the process and encourage people uh that we have another meeting. They should, they, they should uh, uh, you know, uh, log in or, or connect to ask questions they may have. They can send questions if they prefer, and then they're gonna hear information about the process in terms of uh choosing if they wanna be remote or not, or, or not remote. But they have to have, once the decision is made by the committee, then they can decide what, what they wanna do. So I'm, I, I won't say in the letter, you know, you, you can sign up now, but I will say, I, I think I'm channeling Mariah here a little bit. When the, when the uh committee uh actually votes and we know what the plan is, then we should have a window if people wanna sign up. It says, not a window, that's, once it's closed, it's closed, but an opening window to say, beginning at this time, if you, uh, if you, you can let us know, that way we can, for the, in, in the interest of planning. You know, I'll construct a letter that says that, but I'm not gonna corner people on it. I wanna give them information, encourage them to, to look at the website, to get the slides, encourage them to ask questions, know that the committee has to make a decision. Uh, I will say in the letter that uh we uh, that, that, the commissioner wants us to submit our uh, uh, Brookline's plan by August tenth. And uh, and so the school committee will be voting. I don't know when the school committee is gonna vote, but the school committee will need to vote and we'll need to, we will, we will need to submit that. Pay attention to the school committee, uh, submit your questions. And uh, there's a school committee meeting on Thursday. And then this is going out tomorrow, so it's go, it has to go right out, has to go right out, yeah. Right, Erin?
Yeah. Barbara? Barbara, you're on mute.
Um, I'd like some clarification about these ten days.
Okay.
The ten days are for teacher planning. Is that, does that mean that each teacher can use the ten days as they see fit? Does this mean that the union is going to run some professional development? Or is this a time when we could run some professional development?
I'm viewing it as these are ten days for planning purposes, professional days for planning purposes. Uh, in the same way, we have, we have, I think there are three days built in, two or three days, the beginning of the year that are built in for teachers planning when they command orientation, the, the trainings they have to have in the beginning. We, we control those. I'm looking at these ten days as uh, as planning days for the opening of school. No, teachers are not gonna be controlling those days to do what they want. Uh, on the other hand, they're gonna help to drive that because we want to be able to support what they need. So I, I would use the language, what teachers need, we are going to try to provide to the extent that we can. But there probably is gonna be some administrative needs that the teachers are gonna need to work with the administration on. I think that those days, I don't for a moment, if, if you're and uh wondering if teachers are gonna take those days and then just set up their classroom or set up their, their computer uh, and, and use that time for personal gain in that way. That, that time is designed, so they'll be spending time, for example, on remote learning. In fact, I know that, that the teachers, when I uh sit in on those joint labor meetings, there's uh, there, there's a level of concern, and even when I meet quite frankly with the union executive team, uh, there's a level of concern that they wanna use that time, they wanna be the best distance teachers they can be. They are very aware of what happened in the spring, painfully aware. And by the way, most teachers across the state, and I know we hear about the private schools and all that, but most schools across the state have experienced very similar issues. And the teachers really wanna spend a chunk of that time becoming the best distance teachers they can become, which causes them a lot of angst when we talk about uh looking at sort of different models and, 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 in the, in, 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 uh, face-to-face in person and doing the distance. And they are very anxious. So to answer your question directly, I think that the, what the administration wants, what the teachers want are very much the same. We all have a lot of skin in the game. When this school year opens, it doesn't matter what model we're under, we better do a good job. They know it, I know it, you know it, everybody knows it. So those days are, are precious and they're gonna be used away. In fact, uh, I was asked today, cause we can do this, we can take the, the district professional days, we can bank those, which means I'll be coming back to you and asking you to redo the calendar, if you don't have it already, to redo the calendar so that we can bank those professional days, use the ten, save the two or three for another time, because we're anticipating at some point there's gonna be another shift. And we're gonna need time to plan for that shift, but we have, you have to approve that calendar so that we can inform the community about uh professional days that may end up happening in the dead of winter and, and how we're gonna anticipate using those days. So uh, that's a long-winded way, Bob, no. They, we, we will use those days together for very professional purposes.
Okay, uh, Andy?
Yeah, can I just try to get clear on the timeline for um giving parents all the information that they'll use to decide on um remote versus in-person for their child? Um, like what we, what we see before Thursday's meeting is that all the information they're gonna have on which to base their personal decision, or will more detail continue to come out after that?
Well, I'm not certain, I, what other information we want, uh, uh, Erin, I saw you shaking your head.
Yeah, um, I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, we will, we are in the process of drafting our larger blueprint plan, which is right now fifty-something pages um of information, you know, around health and safety and curriculum and scheduling and um everything that the state is requiring. Um, so my sense is that we won't be able to get that document translated in the four languages that we need. Um, I mean, I know we won't be able to do that by Thursday, um, but our goal um really should be to get that done by Monday when we submit it to the state. So then families um have um that full document in the appropriate languages to review um before they make their decision. So it would be sometime after August tenth. Um, and again, I think there needs to be ample amount of time for families to review it since it's such a lengthy document and it's obviously very complex.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, send it, oh, oh, more hands, Mariah?
Um, I just wanted to say that, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, my internet's going in and out. Um, I'm gonna turn off my video, hopefully that'll help. Um, I wanted to say though, that I hope that parents aren't gonna be asked to make decisions based on having to read a fifty-plus page document. Um, I'm hoping that we can have something that um will be uh a couple pages. Um, and also I think it would be nice maybe for parents and children to be able to, um, if we could have a video showing what in-person learning will look like in the hybrid or in-person situation. And then um what it would look like is if you were participating in a remote class, so you could see what that feels like and see which felt good to you. That would be, I think, very helpful for people to make those decisions. Thanks, Mariah, yeah, part of that document is more of like an executive summary and um FAQs and, you know, less lengthy texts for families to read more of a summary.
Yeah, 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 I guess it's something that's brief and to the point that's, that's ready to read. I don't think that they'll need that uh, that, that document is, is, is probably uh gonna be helpful to you uh in, in being able to see the comprehensive view of this. Then individual families, they're gonna be mu- much more interested in what's gonna happen with their child and how they, how they fit into the whole. But um, yeah, so I, 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 I wanted to ask Andy if I could, I, I'm not sure I understood your question. I'm not sure we answered it, you, when you were talking about giving people a timeframe for when they had to sign up.
Oh, uh, no, Erin did answer my question. It was, it was simply that, I knew we were getting something by Thursday and I was wondering whether the parent, the families could expect to learn more after Thursday uh before having to choose for, for themselves.
Yeah, I, I, I think tomorrow's letter will be really uh, you know, very encouraging of them to get the information that we are moving. And they should uh, uh, attend the school committee meeting if they can, ask questions, and we will respond to those questions. And that, you know, w- we're submitting this thing, let's say August tenth, but tha- that's not a deadline for them, that's a deadline for us. I mean, they, they, they don't, they, they don't have to do anything by August tenth. I don't wanna raise their anxiety about that. They can digest this and make a decision after they talk with friends, family, you, uh, their principal, whomever, that they can talk and get a sense of what's better, what's, what's gonna be best for me and my family. What we do need to think about is, uh, when do we need that information? Uh, so that we can put uh staffing where it needs to be and we can see, I mean, we're gonna do the MOU right away, and it was alluded to tonight, but uh we didn't really get into it. And that is, we don't know what the implications are gonna be uh when teachers are, when this gets resolved. We don't know who's gonna be assigned where, who's gonna be comfortable, who wants to be remote, who, how are we gonna adjust that? How are we gonna make that work? There's a whole other layer of logistical uh work that we need to do, to do, to, to, to sort of figure that out, so. Um, and what, and, and this whole thing sort of has to mesh like gears coming together. We do need to know what the distribution of students are gonna be so that we can appropriately have a distribution of staff. And uh, you know, the, 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 the question about Paris enters into it. The question about substitute teachers enters into it in a very significant way. Um, that's not readily apparent right now, but it may become. And uh, and so w- we still have an awful long way to go. So I don't want parents to think, oh my goodness, I have to make this decision by the eleventh. I, I want them to know we are gonna submit. And then the, if they need to have enough information, if they don't have enough information, they should ask. And then, uh, and, and, and David, I think we should have a running list of questions. And I, and I think we should actually keep that and we, we, we should post it. Uh, so that people can reference it if, if they want to, and they stimulate other questions as well. When this is done with, we just have to make sure that we've heard what we need to hear, and then we have to make decisions, cause we're not gonna be able to satisfy every question.
So we have one more speaker who was not on the list, but said she signed up, Carolyn Tholl. Is Carolyn around? Does she wanna speak tonight or does she wanna speak on Thursday? Is she, Robin, is she on?
Um, she is not on, so she would have to register.
Okay.
Okay, so I, so I, I, I hope she can come on Thursday then, if she's not on. Okay, Carolyn, if you're listening, if you could come Thursday, that would be great. Sorry, that was a miscommunication. Mariah, you want the last word?
Um, are we gonna actually talk about whether we defer our vote from Thursday so that the community feels like they have a little more time?
So I think that Jim's gotta help us think that through, uh, and probably go.
Mariah, I, I missed some of what you said.
Just the question of whether we defer our vote from Thursday to early next week to give the community more time to provide input before we make a decision.
So, um, you know, I, I, I think this is an important decision. And I think that the, the, that the committee, you know, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be forced into the timeframe. You're gonna be forced into making a decision. And so I would, I was, this is what I would say, no, I shouldn't say it that way, cause that, that's condescending. This is what I would say to you, that if you're gonna have to make the decision and you're delaying it because, you know, hmm, let's, let's make it next week, then I would say bite the bullet and make the decision. If you know what, what you're gonna do, make the decision and then we can move forward. If you think you need uh more processing time in the interest of fairness, in the interest of, of uh not locking people out and not feeling as though you've rushed to justice, then take the time. And then I will just tell the commissioner, you know, it, it didn't get there on the tenth, it got there on the twelfth. And, and uh, you know, I'll, I'll deal, I'll deal with that. But, but the purpose of delaying that vote should be because you believe that you need the time to make a thoughtful decision uh rather than, oh, I can make the decision now, uh, and, and it's probably not gonna change from when I go there. Then I would say make the decision now. So I don't wanna say to you, make the decision because, look, we have a deadline and by, we're gonna meet that deadline. I think this is too important a decision. I say make the decision, cause you're gonna have to live with it. And we all are gonna have to live with it. And the, the, the decision, once it's made, has to stick. But that said, it's not a decision cast in stone, it's a decision for the moment. As things change on the ground, so too will the uh, what happens in the schools. And for, for obvious reason, we get a spike, we all go remote. We don't get a spike, it's, it continues to go down, we start adding more kids. We add that third grade class maybe, and we uh, we say that the distancing and then the masks are working, we add a little more. This decision is how we're going to start school. It's not necessarily how we're going to end school, it's not necessarily what's gonna happen in January. It's how we're going to start school, which in my view has to be orderly, well-thought-out uh and, and reliable and dependable. So with all of the, you know, wonderful ideas, those can evolve. We are not gonna, I can say, we are not gonna, Matt, 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 you still on? No, he's, yeah, he's still on. He, he sent me an email saying, you know, I'm, I'm ordering tents and, you know, we, we, we're going full steam ahead on this thing. But we're gonna open school in a way that's dependable and reliable. Will we do some outdoor stuff? I, you bet you we will, but don't make a decision on doing outdoor stuff. We have to open the school and so we're, we're gonna do it in a way that we know we can open school and we can carry it out. This other stuff is gonna be a goal and you're gonna hold our feet to the fire on it. And you know how you're gonna do it, because with Suzanne and David, when we meet, we're gonna build some of this stuff into the agenda so that it doesn't go away and it comes back so that we, we talk about it in terms of how, how are we progressing and how are we doing? So uh, your decision is how are we going to open school? And it's not cast in, in stone for the long run, it is how are we gonna open school? I, I mean, there was some texting going back here now about when people declare, how long do they have to declare for? Does it have to be for a half a year? Uh, or can it be for a marking period? Or maybe it should be for a, a. Or maybe it should be for, uh, who knows what? And then there were, there was great comments going back, you have to plan, you have to do all kinds of things. We want to be as flexible as we can for parents, but give ourselves enough space so we can do the kind of planning, so that we're reliable and we deliver on what we say we're going to deliver on. So, um, I think I've talked enough. I think you have a sense of where we're going with this. I'll put something out tomorrow, they have the thing. In terms of the vote, you can decide that on, on Thursday ahead of time, and I think that you, if you, if you feel you can make the decision, let's make it and go forward. If we've heard from enough people, questions and answers, we'll lay it all out there. You certainly will know, you will hear from the people in the community. I certainly will hear from some, I'm going to need three people to read my emails, but nevertheless, uh, I will hear, you will hear, and we'll, uh, and we'll come together on Thursday, and we'll say we're ready to do this. I can tell you this, I, I, jeez, I could talk all night, what is it with me? I, I, we have, I met with Newton, Wellesley, and Needham, they're all doing the same thing. They're all doing, and it's almost the same, interestingly enough, it's almost the same model that we're doing.
Well, on Thursday, will we have the final version of the actual plan to review?
I think you will, well, uh, right, yes, yes, you will, yeah, yeah.
So I think, I think he's right, Mariah, we can decide on Thursday for ready to vote or for not ready to vote. In which case, we'll have to figure out when we are ready to vote, because we still need to get it in. But come prepared, we, we'll read all we can, get input from everywhere we can, and then we'll see how ready we are on Thursday.
Suzanne, I have my hand up.
Oh, Sharon, I can't see it, I'm sorry, you're like, I don't see your hand, go ahead.
I don't see you.
I see you, but not your hand.
I mean, it sounds to me, I, I'm not too concerned about the question of, of, of when we take a vote, because it sounds like we've gone from sh- having a voice, a vote that's choosing between three different scenarios, to eliminating one scenario, converging the two, and doing something, right? So we're basically voting to open school, right? And the rest is the details. So, I mean, I, I think that, I think we're going to vote to open school eventually. Um, and it's hard to picture a situation in which the, this current, um, it, you know, us, district leadership is going to go in a substantially different direction than it is right now. So I'm not too worried about that. I do think that, um, I think it's really important for us to set up a Q and A, like, in which people call in, they ask questions, there's a couple of people who are available, who can answer them, and who can say, I don't have the answer to that yet, right? Um, I mean, we're doing the best that we can, I think, just as community members, really, to represent the concerns that are coming out. But there are some questions that I don't think that, um, like, we don't have enough time or space to bring to you in sort of a filtered way, it's not the right format. And so, you know, I just want to, again, suggest that, um, you can use the, the Friday morning task force as an opportunity to have a public Q and A, you know, where people call in, they ask a question, you give your answer. There's, you know, really a known universe of, of possible questions and answers. You know, at this point, we're starting to see the same questions over and over. There's about, uh, five hundred of them, but it's a known universe, you know? Um, and, and I think that, you know, we, we should be shifting away from us sort of representing those questions to letting people ask them directly, like, for a couple of hours, maybe even once a week, you know, as situation changes in the buildup towards school. Um, you know, and, um, I can say that I've heard that that's happening in other districts, where superintendents are holding Google meets with their communities, and holding Q and As for about an hour and a half a week, and they're committing to do that into the start of the school year. And, um, it's, it's, uh, it's really helpful for, um, getting everybody, like, making sure that everybody is working from the same information, and that they're not just sort of sharing rumors, or kind of conspiracy mongering, or, you know, you know. I, I, I feel like it's a really good way to give people an opportunity to have a voice after a vote to open school has happened.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, what do we think?
I, I, I think we're done for tonight, what do you think?
I, I think we're pretty cooked, yeah.
I, 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 I think that, uh, you know, on balance, I'm actually pleased with the way tonight went, personally.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I don't think there's any less work left to do, that's for sure, but I'm pleased with the way it went. Uh, hats off to, uh, Casey and Erin, who were writing and not sleeping. I think they did a terrific job, really. And, um, you know, we'll go to the, we'll go to the next, uh, the, the next step. And, uh, I, you know, I, I, I will make myself available, uh, for people to ask questions. I, I, my only concern is that, uh, if it gives the impression that after we get to a point where there's a vote, that it's, it's, it's still not done, that's not, that wouldn't be appropriate, because it's misleading. But if it, but if it's to give people access to, uh, get information, we could actually, uh, we could probably arrange for something like that. A, 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 a question, sort of like a, a, a help desk kind of thing, or a question desk kind of thing, uh, information clearinghouse, that people are not going to, they're not going to know, they're going to, they've heard this a gazillion times, but now they have a question for real, and who do I ask this question of? We could probably set something like that up, I think that might be helpful.
Yeah.
I think, if I could, uh, the FAQ that David was talking about is a more, is an easier way to make sure that everybody gets in the same, because the same questions will come up.
Yeah.
And having that posted on our website.
That's good, yeah.
I think that's the easiest way to do it, rather than individual people calling and having a-
No, Helen, I want to, I want to, sorry, I want to push back on that, because what I've observed in a, in a different context is that, um, what is happening is that parents are finding out what the correct information is, and they're sharing it with their peer groups. So week to week, the actual number of questions is declining over time, and, um, the actual, uh, the accuracy of the information that people are bringing to questions is actually improving. Um, and parents are, you know, and community members are taking on the roles of disseminating that information to their networks, rather than sort of depending on these viewing times, which are kind of difficult to access under the best of circumstances, you know, in order to get information that's sharply restricted. And facts can be helpful, but they can also be sort of unsatisfying if you can't find the answer to your question.
So I just, so we'll, we'll take this under advisement, I think. Um, I just want to thank everyone for being so focused and staying on this topic. Uh, I mean, we did three and a half hours tonight on one topic, it's kind of a different way to do a committee meeting, uh, but I thought we, we, we were on it, stayed focused, and thank you for that. Thank you, Erin, to Kay, and Casey and Matt, for all you're doing to get us where we need to be. Matt, thanks for still being here. Regina, thanks for showing up, David, lots of people, Mindy, yeah, I want to thank everybody. And Robin, thank you for, um, helping it work pretty smoothly to get the public comments, so thank you for that. Uh, okay, Jim, good night.
Good night, and, uh, uh, David, get a good night's sleep, I'll be calling you in the morning, I think. Ready, ready, go, yeah. You know, the, these panels, these panels are godsend, so, uh, thank you. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.